Good evening, everyone. We're going to open the Inlands, Wetlands and Water Commission for the Commission for the Town of Trumbull, Connecticut for April 1st, 2025. I will ask our clerk to do do a roll call if she would.
Richard Gerard.
Present.
John Loria.
Here.
Carmine DeFeo.
Here.
Rich Steakin.
Present.
David Verespi.
Present.
Greg Cernica.
Present.
Bob Frignum.
Here.
Town staff Tatiana Solovey.
Here.
John Mayer.
Here.
And Attorney Cordone.
I am here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Colleen. Hey, this will be a video conference meeting, so I'm going to ask our attorney to give us the legal aspects of doing such a meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of this commission, the April meeting. Pursuant to Connecticut law, it is permitted to be conducted by video conference and teleconference over the Internet and telephone. During the public comment period on an application in which there is a public hearing, which there is tonight, you will be given instructions on how to raise your hand electronically or dial star nine if you're in the public to speak. The agenda for this meeting was posted on the Trumbull Town website in advance of the meeting along with the supporting materials for each application. Any comments posted on any online format will not be included in the record and the commission will not see those comments. I would ask all commissioners and participants to kindly identify yourself before speaking, be acknowledged by the chair, and we do so that for the benefit of those who may only be listening by telephone. Finally, I would ask the chairman to make sure any votes are conducted by roll call unless the vote is unanimous and advise everyone that tonight's meeting is being recorded. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, we will open new business, Application 25-08 Giacobi Construction LLC. It's a permit approval for partial clearing, construction of a single-family dwelling with associated site improvements, including drainage and utility lines within a regulated area at Marshall Avenue lots 80 and 81. I see the applicant's son and I also see Attorney Russo. I'm assuming you're going to be giving us the presentation, if you would.
Yes, Chair Commissioners Chris Russo with Russo and Rizio LLC offices at 10 Sasko Hill Road in Fairfield here on behalf of the applicant. Good to be before you. As stated, this is an application for a single-family dwelling. I can share my screen. Pull this up. So these, these actually were originally two lots. There's actually two sewer laterals at the site. But we consolidated these lots into, into a single lot and, you know, went for variances, received variances to be able to, you know, build the structure that you're, that you see before you. As you can see on the, on the site plan, on one side is located a intermittent water course. Usually doesn't have any steady flow through it. I talked to my client, you know, what he's observed flow-wise there. He said, you know, in heavy rains, the water usually clears out pretty quick. My understanding is this goes into a pipe that the town has that, that takes it across the street. And, you know, essentially, you know, what you see there is what, you know, what we're getting. It's a, it's a single-family house. You can see the driveway there, the utility lines to, to connect. We're able to, you know, give ourselves a decent distance from that water course and then submitted with this application was a planting plan showing a plan along the entire length of the water course on both sides. And, and with that planting, there's still enough room there between the dwelling and the plantings for, you know, whoever lives there in the future to be able to kind of access to, to the rear of the site. But we've also shown, we've submitted plans showing the location. I'll have to zoom back up to the top, but the cultech units and drainage and all, as well as all the sediment and erosion control measures to make sure we, you know, protect that water course during construction. But then other than that, it's, you know, fairly straightforward, you know, singles family dwelling. Happy to answer any questions or if you have any comments, information that we could provide.
Tatiana, did you have any comments for the commission? Or John Mayer?
Um, I was just curious why you're connecting overflow to the CB on the street and not discharging to the water core? It just seems like a lone pipe. I mean, it's not a big deal. I'm just curious why that is.
I don't know if the applicant's on here. They couldn't answer that. I'm not sure as to why they made that decision.
I mean, this is Joe Giacobi Senior. A- as far as that goes, I mean, I'm not opposed to tying it in to that stream. I just thought staying away from it would, you know, just be a little bit easier to get along with everybody.
Okay. The other thing, I don't see how the driveway runoff can get to the system, so we may have to work with your engineer, but I'll do a full review definitely prior to the next meeting. These are, excuse me, fairly easy adjustments, but otherwise I don't have any comments for now.
All right, I know we'll be walking this Attorney Russo, so if we can get the four corners of the house staked out and the, I'm assuming that's a deck, small picture.
Yeah. Oh, the porch. You mean the porch in the rear?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to see here, so.
Sorry, let me zoom in.
Normally I would have asked John Loria to do it, but I, I don't have a full screen here, so. All right, in the interim, any requests or comments from the commissioners for what they'd like to see for next month if we're going to be walking this?
Location of the filtration system, Mr. Chairman.
You got that Attorney Russo?
Well, the, sorry, the location of filtration system, did you say?
Yes, location. Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Bob.
Through the chair.
Yes, Greg, go ahead.
And the water course, the way I read the prints, they're flagged, correct?
They are.
Thank you. Through the chair.
Go ahead, Carmine.
I have a question regarding Section 2 of the application, line 19, material to be. They filled in some numbers, but they're not telling us deposited or excavated.
I thought that, that was in there, but I don't have the application in front of me.
This, for the record, that's the applicant, Mr. Giacobi. If you can clarify it for, for our next meeting as to whether it's deposited or excavated. Carmine.
Pardon?
I said, good catch.
Yeah, the, the other question. It mentions the area 1,344 square feet, which I'm assuming is the layout of the house. Volume of concrete, 260 cubic yards. That's based on a, a concrete foundation?
I thought that that was the, the number of cubic yards being removed from the site. Maybe on the excavation, maybe I misplaced the line, but I will first thing tomorrow morning go over it.
I, I'd appreciate it.
Not a worry.
Is there a basement in this house?
Not really, no. It's, it's, it's like a, it's almost a raised ranch, I would say. Pretty much.
All right, anything else? And anything else?
This is David.
Okay, go ahead, David.
Uh, the planting looks excellent. Alexandra Mock did the planting plan. She does an excellent job. No additions or changes needed there.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else Attorney Russo? Otherwise we'll move on to the next application.
Yeah, Chair, one thing, one thing I didn't mention that we'll make sure to do as well. There are a few trees that I understand are dead and my client was hoping to remove them. And so what we'll do is in addition to staking the corners, we'll tie a ribbon, you know, around those trees. At least that's what I've done previously is tie a ribbon around it just so you know which ones we're intending to, to remove.
All right, can you also make sure they're on the plan for the next meeting?
Yeah, we'll add it to the, add it to the plan as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So are we good?
That's it for me.
All right, very good. We're going to move to Application 25-09 Amelia Ferry. It's a permit approval to legalize existing improvements for retaining wall location topographical, again, contour changes and underground infiltration system within a regulated area at 4 Sycamore Street. Modification of Application 21-06.
Chairman, members of the commission, Raymond Rizio for the record here. I think I'm gonna.
Don't panic. I know you're new to this.
Yeah, I'm not very, I, you know, with Chris and I in different spots, it's very difficult.
There you go. Okay.
Can I be heard?
You can be heard. Go ahead.
Chair members of the commission, my name's Raymond Rizio with Officer Russo and Rizio, 10 Sasko Hill Road, Fairfield, Connecticut. I'm here representing Amelia Ferry. One thing, it might be easier. This is, there's three separate properties, but basically almost the same application for all three. There are three lots in a row. So your next application is 2510 and then your application after that, 2511. Really kind of need to, will almost be heard as one application. It's concerning a rebuilding of a of a retaining wall that our client rebuilt and thought, because he was rebuilding it further from the wetlands, that it was okay to do. So we're trying to legalize that wall and the stuff and, and then the surrounding work that came with it. If we can pull up the map, Chris, maybe you can do that for me?
It's my understanding that the wall is encroaching on the neighbors.
Yes, so currently there's a letter there that we are, so the, the wall was always, there was part of the wall was always on the neighbor's property. The neighbor and, and the ferries are in the process of actually exchanging that. So hopefully by the time of the next hearing that the stone wall, which is partially on the neighbor's property, which is really on, on the other side of a creek that the client, that the, the neighbor really doesn't care about having responsibility for the retaining wall, the ferries will be obtained, will be, will be acquiring that part, that piece of property from the neighbor. And there's a letter that has been submitted saying that the neighbor consents this application and is working with the ferries to exchange, to transfer the property to them. So what, what happened was there was this retaining wall that was closer to the stream that was falling down that was dangerous. The ferries rebuilt a new retaining wall within the regulated area, but further from the wetlands. And now we need to get that legalized. That kind is going to be our presentation. That's kind of what, and as you can see, this actually takes care of three lots. There's an existing lot where there's a house up. Then in the middle.
Mr. Chairman, Counselor May.
Attorney Cordone, because I was going to ask you, is this legal to do what we're doing all three at one?
It, it is, if it's a, if, if, if the applicant, Attorney Rizio, would you like all three applications to be reviewed at the same time for the purposes of tonight's meeting?
Yes, yes, please. As the, as the as the, the work that has been done, basically it goes across all three lots, all, all similar ownership.
That, that's legal. When we come to a vote, which obviously will not be tonight, we'd have to consider each application separately. Is it okay with staff and the chair to have all three applications be heard at the same time tonight?
I think I can speak for the commission for timing. It's fine because we have quite a large agenda tonight, so.
Tatiana, does that pose any issue for you?
It makes sense to review all at once.
Wonderful. Okay, then, Mr. Chairman, we could just call all three applications to be proper. And then we'll let Attorney Rizio continue his presentation. Thank you.
All right, and that, okay. For the record, Application 25-10 Amelia Ferry, a permit approval to legalize existing improvements for retaining wall location. Topographic contour changes, proposed underground infiltration system location and new rear deck within a regulated area at 6 Sycamore Street. Modification of Application 21-07. Application 25-11 Amelia Ferry, permit approval to legalize proposed retaining wall location, relocate scour hole location and encroachment of limit of disturbance within a regulated area at lot 321 Sycamore Street.
Okay, so Chair and Members of the Commission, I apologize. So if you basically look at this plan and it's Raymond Rizio once again on all three applications for the applicant Amelia Ferry. The ferries have built one house, which you'll see, which I would, which is going to be 4 Sycamore Street, which is the, the new, the first house on the way in. They're under, they've started construction. They have a foundation permit on the lot next door, which I believe is 6 Sycamore Street. And then they have another lot at the end, which they will hopefully be coming to build another house. There's a lot going on with this application. As you can see where this retaining wall was, you'll see in blue a proposed property line. The property line, what's going to happen is the ferries are going to acquire from the person whose house is actually on Madison, on Madison Avenue and is on the other side of the stream. They don't want any liability for this old retaining wall that the ferries rebuilt. So what's going to happen is they're going to transfer this land to the ferries and it'll be part of the ferry, the ferry's property at 6 Sycamore Street. Then they will have full responsibility for this retaining wall that they rebuilt that was basically falling down. As I said, they apologized to the commission. I think they were under the understanding they were building this house. When they're building the house at 4, this other retaining wall was falling down. They decided to rebuild it and pull it further from the wetlands. Realizing that even though you're, not realizing that even though you're pulling it further from the wetlands, you need a wetlands permit. So now we're back before you to try and that, try and get an approval for this to rebuild of the, legalize the rebuilt retaining wall. Have a remediation plan, which will probably require replacing the boulders, more definition of the, and boundaries proposed along the wetland, along the, in the regulated area to protect the wetlands. Keep in mind, there's been no wetlands filled or touched. But there is this little culvert kind of stream that goes through the back of the neighbor's property. And that's why, that's kind of why we're here. I, I don't think, I don't know if anybody has walked the property yet, but you really need to walk the property when you see where this wall is versus where it was. I think then we'll be able to work with engineering a lot prior to the next hearing to address most, most of the issues. But we wanted to do is when we're notified that they had, had a problem with this retaining wall, Ms. Ferry immediately filed three applications to get on your agendas as soon as possible, of which then we'll work with engineering over the next, until we get to the next meeting to hopefully come up with a solution and a, and a remediation plan that this commission will be, feel comfortable with. And I anticipate that you'll be putting this down for a public hearing.
And in answer to, I'm sorry, Bob, I actually walked it with Tatiana. So I was going to go to her next, but go ahead. Bob Frigno, you have a question?
Yeah, question to, yeah, question to Attorney Cordone. We have to establish ownership before we approve this application. There's been a transfer that's in place. Do we have to wait for the transfer and ownership completed before we approve?
Because that was a question to me.
Yes, yes.
Not, not necessarily. What we need is consent from the property owner. So oftentimes there's a contract purchaser. In this case, it's a bit of a lot line revision. So we would have just, at a minimum, need consent from the existing property owner for this application.
Tatiana, that, you've received that, haven't you?
Well, one question. Is that in writing, Jim? Is that, is that in writing?
Yes, this is Tatiana. A letter has been submitted to us this afternoon. And I'll run it by Jim just to make sure that's all we need or if anything needs to be added.
Okay, obviously we're going to be walking this. You want to give us your comments? And I know, I know there's one house there and the other house already has a foundation in, so that's there. Attorney Russo, is the third house staked out? I didn't notice.
But that, no, that there's, that is, that is, would be, you know, a separate application.
Okay.
What's going to, what, what we anticipate happening, and it was discussed before, is the client is working with the town to possibly abandon Sycamore Street. If Sycamore Street should get abandoned, the house that would go on the third lot can move even further away from the wetlands. But that's a, you know, to get that lot approved, you really, we really need this paper street that has never been improved and really goes nowhere. As you can see, Sycamore Street runs into the rear of other properties. And we just need to work out with the town, the possible abandonment of Sycamore Street so that we, any house that is going to be built on this third lot can move, a lot can move further away from the wetlands and, and to a better grades. So these, these applications are, it's not to create the third lot. It's really to, to correct what's been done and have a remediation plan put in place.
All right, Tatiana, did you have any comments or items you wanted to see when we walk this?
Well, I just wanted to highlight the amount of fill that was brought to the properties. The, the wall is one thing, but really there's according to the application, a total of about 1,800 cubic yards on all three properties, which is, is massive. It's enough to cover a football filled with a, a foot worth of material. So I'm not sure where that came from, but that's just for the commission to know. And otherwise, yes, we'll be walking it.
And can we get some clarification on that for our next meeting, Attorney Russo? Or Attorney Rizio, rather?
Certainly.
Through, through the chair.
Go ahead, Carmine.
Attorney Rizio. How, how does this wall actually affect 4 Sycamore Street? Appears by this drawing, it's all on 6, so why is there an application in for 4?
Because basically the, the wall that was been, that was falling down was on 4 Sycamore. Our client stabilized the wall and then put the, put fill in behind it. They didn't, there, he, his kind of agreement with the neighbor was to, to replace this wall. The neighbor doesn't really want to have responsibility for the wall. So as you can see, Commissioner DeFeo, there's a, you see in blue, there's a proposed property line. So our client will be, will be obtaining this triangular piece so that the entire wall will be on their property line, on their property.
So the wall, so that, where is the wall that they repaired on 4 Sycamore Street?
They, it's a new wall. They took it out.
It's a new wall.
Yeah, they took out the old wall and put the new wall, but they did it further from the wetlands.
Good evening, my name is Amelia Ferry. I'm the applicant. I just want to clarify a few things. Is it possible to zoom in a little bit further into lot A, which is 4 Sycamore? This might help with clarifying Commissioner DeFeo's question. If you see, there is an existing black line where there was a wall there and it was repaired and pushed a little bit north. And then the, in, in red, you'll see in red now, concrete block retaining wall. So that one is the one that gets connected to the lot B, which is 6 Sycamore. So that's how they are intertwined in that corner there.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair.
Good, Rich.
Thank you. So we know where 4 and 6 are. Just to confirm, I'm looking, the, the third lot is listed as number 321. Is that the interior lot at the end of the paper road?
Correct. The end of the paper street, if you, let's pull, let's, if we can pull back the map. It actually has frontage on a city, on a town street. Being Sycamore Place, it's just unimproved. I think you have to pull the map back further. You'll see Sycamore there. See, the paved section of Sycamore ends at this driveway. And the, the, the idea is it would be better to, before anything is done with this lot, to try and get Sycamore abandoned. This way you could bring a house all the way up and it would run, Sycamore Street would basically dead end into where this, where, where the new lot would be.
Okay, so the area directly below that, directly south of that lot, that's currently, even though it goes through the wetland, that's considered part of the paper road as well?
Everything, everything, yeah, you'll see the dotted lines. Those dotted lines are the property lines. And then the street is right, it runs from basically improved section of Sycamore Street all the way to property owned by, I think it's Sacum at the end, all the way on the left of the map.
Okay, so if, if the street is abandoned, then they're going to be splitting half the land to whoever that is Daniels and Mancini, and then the other half would be going to 321?
Or our client has the ability to obtain both, both sides.
Okay, and?
And at that point, you would end up with a lot more area with which to come back to the town and propose a new lot.
Okay, then they'd go to the ZBA for the variance for the?
For whatever variance they, see, the, the lots exist. All three lots exist because they all had frontage on this, on this, on this paper street. So those lots have existed. They've been paying taxes as separate lots. They, they're in separate names. They've never merged. So now the question is this third lot, what do you need to do to possibly make it a building lot? And one of the things we thought to do would be try to get Sycamore Street abandoned. That has nothing to do with this application, though. That's just for something down the road should, if and when Sycamore Street would get abandoned.
Okay, because I remember seeing a similar application 16 years ago where I remember inspecting this property. I think it was the, the area, I'm pointing as if you can see, I'm sorry. The area at the end of the paper road, it was a pretty dramatic incline in one area, but the side to the south was a lot more level.
Correct. That's why if you could abandon Sycamore Street, you could, you, you don't end up having to have the, you, you take that nasty topography out of the way.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yep. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, we're good. Okay, at this point, I'm going to ask the commission if they feel we should do a public hearing for the good of the public. And I'll do a roll call. Carmine, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, Bob Frigno.
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rich?
Absolutely. It'll probably be our, my 10th time inspecting the place. I'd love to see it again. But this, this, this time it actually makes sense.
I feature by four. John, yes?
Yes, but I won't be here next month.
No, no, oh, okay. And I'm a yes, so it's unanimous. It will be a public hearing.
Chairman, can I ask you one question about the agenda?
Sure.
So we, we've, we've taken care of all your new business. You have your old business and then it wasn't clear for me because I'm representing Mr. Reardon.
Right.
I'm, I'm assuming he's going to, this old business you're either going to vote on and then we'll go to the public hearing. Is that what that's, is that what's intended?
Yes.
Okay, I'll get out of your way. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chairman, just to be formal, if I may. Mr. Chairman, ju- just to, uh, be formal, if I may, um, just probably need someone to make the motion for the public hearings for applications twenty-five oh nine, twenty-five ten and twenty-five eleven, and have a second. And then just do that vote one more time.
Now you say? We would do, we would do them individually?
You, you, well, no, you could conduct one public hearing for all three applications. And then we need to vote on them separately.
All right, Greg, if you would, please.
Sure, I make a motion to, to move applications twenty-five oh nine, which is Four Sycamore Street, twenty-five ten, which is Six Sycamore Street, twenty-five eleven, lot three two one, Sycamore Street, uh, to a public hearing, uh, due to public interest.
Yeah, I need a second. Seconded by Rich Deacon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you, Counselor, for watching my back. I appreciate it. Okay, old business, application twenty-five dash zero three. Slav. The Yank, I'm trying to remember how I did this last, uh, last month.
Janeska?
Yes, thank you. My lips didn't even move, if you notice. Thank you very much, Rich. Uh, permit approval for construction of twenty-eight foot by twenty-six foot addition and a twenty-eight foot by seventeen foot elevated deck within a regulated area at thirty-nine Williams Road. And let's, and I do see the applicant.
Hello, Chairman. Good to see you again. So, um, uh, this language, by the way, was updated slightly based on the feedback we got from, uh, you know, the commission during the walkthrough and, uh, you know, from Tatiana's feedback as well. So we included the language, um, to, uh, repair the pool, um, in the backyard, as well as, uh, tree removal, uh, et cetera. So just a couple of, uh, more words on that. Included in the application and also, um, most importantly, we added the planting plan uh, for the native buffer, uh, plantings. Um, it's, uh, displayed on the site, uh, site plan, uh, the one that we updated and provided, uh, for this meeting. Uh, I'm not sure if anybody could share, please, um. Not, I can try to figure out how to do it myself.
Tatiana, can we, or John, can we get this on?
Uh, if John can help, uh, it, it would be the best if applicant could share.
Uh, just give me a sec. I usually do not use Zoom, so let me see, where is the share button? Shares here. Can you share? Let me know if you guys would see. Do you see the share button?
You have your application, uh, showing right now.
Okay, awesome.
To your plan.
How do I move this to the side? Because it's blocking the view. This, okay, um, able to see now?
Right.
Also see if I can zoom in. All right, so, um, the key thing, right, that I was mentioning, um, we have added, um, the plants buffer, right, is indicated, if you see, is my, you know, my mouse cursor, it's, um, going from the bridge in the backyard uh, and going all the way to the front of the house, um, you know, that would be uh, representing the buffer between any construction activity we have, um, and, uh, the stream there. So, um, we propose, uh, a couple of different species there, um. So we have iris germanica, um, and alliums sativum, so seven of each, um, it's five feet, uh, uh, you know, spacing between them, um, as was recommended, uh. And, uh, also site plan has all the updates, the other ones we mentioned in the application and, uh, you know, what was, uh, received from Tatiana as well throughout our, um, you know, reciprocal communication during the past months. So we included the tree that, um, would be probably removed as necessary. Um, I think I dedicated to the commission during walkthrough that we would like to keep it if possible, but if not, just in case, we included it as a removal. Um, and, uh, we also updated that pool, um, would need to be reconstructed or repaired, whatever the language applies. Um, but yeah, there is, uh, also an update, I think, on the calculation site, uh, as per Tatiana's feedback and engineering department. Our engineer has updated the calculations, um, and, uh, I think we tried to address all the feedback, um, from everyone, but, uh, if Tatiana has any further feedback, of course, we're happy to, um, follow up and wrap it up, uh, make sure that everything is as, as tight as possible. But otherwise, I mean, everybody already is familiar with this case, especially after walkthrough. Uh, I mean, they are looking to get approved for, um, this twenty-eight by twenty-six addition. Uh, right here, you can see, and the old deck, which is currently existing in our backyard, we just plan to move it to the side. Uh, so that's pretty much it. Um, I'm open to answer any questions.
Tatiana, you want to give us your overview?
Um, I honestly haven't had a chance to review the revisions, but they were so minor, we can, uh, proceed, uh, without final approval from engineering. Um, the only thing, uh, the plantings that the commission wanted along the brook, um, so I don't have any engineering things.
Okay, um, I'm gonna go to David. David, did you get a chance to, uh, review thirty-nine Williams Road?
Through the chair, yes, I did. The, uh, plantings that they have shown on the plan are basically perennials and they're showing them that they would be maybe three to five feet across. Those plants are best are gonna get, you know, a foot across and most likely, um, they're not gonna be around in the winter and probably they're, you know, they're gonna be difficult to identify in the, the, the existing conditions out there. We had specifically requested shrubs, um, that would go through there, not perennials. Um, so I would say that those, those plants would be a shrub, you could do like a red twig dogwood or yellow twig dogwood or, um, clethrol in the folia, which is the sweet pepper bush, or inkberry, something of that. You know, along those lines, that would be approved. You know, wetlands plants, native wetlands plants that are shrubs as opposed to, uh, perennials.
Okay, what's showing here? Could, uh, if they were to replace the shrubs that are showing with what you're mentioning, would that be sufficient?
Yes.
All right, uh, Bob, you had a question?
No, I concur with David, that we had talked about the possibility of replacing those perennials, and I concur with David a hundred percent with the selection of plants that, uh, he is picking out or he selected or talked about at the time of the visit.
All right, let me ask the applicant, if, um, we were to approve this tonight and we have, um, David and Bob submit a, uh, list to, uh, Tatiana and Tatiana can work with you on, uh, getting those substituted. Would you agree to that?
Yeah, I don't see any problem. Um, apologies if, you know, the plans we suggested is not, you know, what you're looking for, but, you know, we just tried to give our best shot at it since, uh, I'm not as familiar with, uh, plants specifically, um, so we will be happy to incorporate the feedback, uh, with the committee members and work, you know, to make sure that everything is as suggested. We don't have any problems with that.
Any other, uh, comments from the commission?
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Rich.
Uh, maybe Mr. Varespi or Mr. Frigno would know, um, all the plants that are being put in here, these are all native to New England or native to Connecticut, correct?
Uh, the allium and the, um, iris are more ornamental varieties. They aren't necessarily native to the area. Um, there are, there are some irises that are native wetlands plants for this area, but not the ones that are shown. And there are some alliums that are native to this area, but not the ones that are shown. Those are more ornamental varieties.
So the ones that you suggested will, will all be native?
Yeah, and the perennials go away in the winter and they come back during the season, um, so in the winter, there'd be nothing there. What we are looking for is shrubs that would be there all year. They've got more robust root systems, they're gonna provide better buffering, there's gonna be better water filtration, et cetera.
Okay, so these are, these are superior plants in themselves, but they're also native, unlike the other ones. That's, that's great, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, also, they would be stabilized, yes, they'd also stabilize bank more so within the perennials. There was just
Thank you.
Stabilize that bank too.
All right, that's, that's perfect then, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All right, um, let's see. Hey, Greg, can I, um, get a motion to approve?
Sure. Um, I make a motion to approve application twenty-five oh three um, for a permit approval for the construction of a twenty-eight by twenty-six addition and a twenty-eight by seventeen elevated deck within a regulated area at thirty-nine Williams Road. Uh, from the Town Trumbles Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission, Section One, General Conditions, one point one to one point one oh. And an additional condition, three point one, applicant to submit a modified planning plan along the brook to include native wetland shrubs, not perennials, to the engineering department.
Okay, have we missed anything? Go ahead, Rich.
I'm seconding Mr. Cernica's motion.
Okay, so we're good on that? All right, we have a second by, uh, Rich. Um, can you take the, um, uh, plan off the screen, sir?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, appreciate that. All right, um, okay, all in favor, uh, Carmine?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so it's unanimous. All right, good night, sir.
Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Application twenty-five dash zero four, Matt and Leila Freed?
Through the chair.
Approval, yep.
Uh, this is David Varespi, I need to recuse myself on this application, so if Colleen could call me when you guys are done, I will come back.
All right. Thank you, thank you, I was gonna come back to you, but. All right, so, um, it's a permit approval to remove existing patios, walkways, steps to deck and fence and fencing. Construct new pool, patios, walkway, fencing, planting, steps to deck, deck and associated site improvements within a regulated area at Six Vintage Road. And I'm looking to see. I see, uh, Abigail's on, I believe she's going to be the spokeswoman for this application. You have your, uh, your mic is muted.
Hi.
There you go.
Okay, um, would you like me to share my screen to run you through the project again, or?
Well, first thing we have to do is you have to identify yourself and address and things, if you would.
All right, my name is Abigail Swans and I'm representing the Freed Property at number nine Vintage Road in Trumble, Connecticut.
Okay, and if you want to share your screen, thank you.
I can do that. Can everyone see that?
Not yet.
Okay. Are we set?
Yep, is there a way of making it larger?
Of course I can do that.
Would help.
Okay.
Well, there you go.
So this is existing conditions, just so that, to remind everyone, but the driveway is coming down. The main residence is here. Um, at the current, at the moment, um, the driveway is here, we have access through here, there's an existing deck, an existing patio. This is the one hundred foot setback for regulated activity. Um, this is the proposed location for the erosion control fencing or silt fence. And, um, to remind you, it's a very, very steep slope going down. Um, and we could see an intermittent course of water through here when we were standing up on the slope on the day. Okay? The proposed plan is as follows. I'm gonna slide it over. Okay, first of all, coming in down from the driveway, we're proposing narrowing the overall driveway and sweeping it in and tying it into the garage. Um, we're retaining the existing deck, but we're changing the configuration of the steps coming down to give us more space down between the, the proposed pool. Um, we then walk down, we then have a proposed pool at fourteen by twenty-eight. And then in, beyond the pool, cantilevered over, um, we have a deck. And then on either side of the deck, we have two retaining walls, one retaining wall here to tie into the deck here and one retaining wall here. And then to stabilize the slopes throughout and to mitigate any, you know, runoff of water, we have a relatively lush planting of native vegetation. We also, to the side of the house, we have a hot tub. And then the proposed pool equipment is over here on the other side, beyond this fence in this corner over here. Um, again, to remind you, this is the one hundred foot setback. And, uh, this is the flagged wetland line. Um, when we were out on site, I believe, um, the only question that came up that I recall was um, how much fill we would be removing from the property and that needed to be addressed. And we are proposing removing sixty cubic yards from the pool to be able to build the pool.
Can you repeat that number, please? You said sixteen or six?
Sixty, six zero.
Six zero.
Okay, thank you.
That was the only, um, question that we really had. Of course, there's a lot of debris on the slope and we all noted that. So, any questions, thoughts, comments? Would be welcome.
Okay, Tatiana or John Mayer, if you can give us your, uh, thoughts first?
Sorry, couldn't get to that mute button. Um, so all questions have been addressed, um. There was a question about a shed, um, and apparently the survey was done prior to, uh, owners changing the location of it. So that's where the discrepancy came from. But it was asked to verify the impervious area and that was done, um, so there is no requirement for the stormwater system, uh, with that proposal. Um, and let's see, the erosion controls, I believe, have been revised. And structural design of the pool will be provided prior to the building permit up, um, uh, building permit, uh, and also Aquarian has been, um, notified. Uh, so these are all the items that I had on the list from previous meeting and, uh, the walk.
All right, thank you. Questions from the commission or comments?
Through the chair? This is Greg.
Hey, Greg.
Yes, uh, to the applicant or to Tatiana, when you get these, the pool and a hot tub, um, do they submit, um, plans for, uh, I know we typically have, uh, some conditions for backwashing the filter and so forth. I don't know the type of equipment, what they're uh, going with, or does that get done later? Or do we just leave that as a, uh, open condition that needs to be submitted to you uh, once they finalize their pool plans?
Uh, the, the pool equipment, we typically ask that the, the pad is shown, but as far as the type of the pool equipment, we do not monitor that, that's all through the building department.
So we're, because we have in our, uh, for pools, we have, uh, some of our conditions are typically, uh, where's the backwash from the filter going? It should go into a dry well, that kind of stuff. So I just, uh, curious, how does this get folded into something like that? Does it come in later with the, um, department, or, uh, are we supposed to just leave it as an open condition? We have it on our, um.
Yeah. Yeah.
General conditions, so.
Yeah, I'm not an e- expert in pool equipment. I believe most of these do not apply to, um, general pool setups. We can, or the commission is welcome to add, um, any conditions, and if don't, if they don't apply, then obviously they won't, um, be enforced. I hope that helps. I'm sorry, but.
Through the chair.
Through the trip.
I think that we should enforce all the, uh, regulations that we, we put in place, like for the backwash filter and stuff. I'm not an expert on these things as well, but, um, nor- normally these plans show where the, uh, pool equipment is gonna be the and I don't know if that's even located on the, on this particular plan.
It is, it's right here.
It's over there, okay.
It's right here, sorry. There you go.
When I lived in Calif, this is Greg Circo. I lived in California. I used to do the backwash. But to save water, when you're in a drought area, they used to backwash back into the pool. But you have to have the, a, a secondary filter to catch diatomaceous earth. I don't know what they're using. We just don't want people backwashing. I know some of the old pools, they would backwash the filters and dump it down the hill. That's not what we're looking for. You know, so I don't know how to cap, we'll capture that, I guess, maybe just under the conditions.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, well, does the, uh, does this, uh, be the requirements of, uh, which Greg is talking about? We have, we have guidelines that we want to fulfill, and the question to, uh, the applicant is, are these being met?
Well, one of the conditions we've always asked for, if they drain the pool, they have to drain it to, you know, bring in a, a tank or something, because they can't just drain it into the wetlands. So I think the, uh, after look, I have my, uh,
Yeah, we have four conditions. I think what we'll probably do is.
Put the four in, that's all.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's my recommendation as well.
Through the chair.
Good, uh, Rich.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, as you may, may remember, when, um, I'm looking through the twenty-seventeen, uh, regulations, uh, conditions. Um, spent a good time, as you may remember, I, I wrote the list of conditions of approval. And I originally, uh, we've got it down to thirteen or fourteen. Originally, I had thirty-seven. And several of them had to do with the pools. Um, the dry well, the pool drainage has to be off-site. Uh, there, we even used to have a, a discharge pH requirement. Um, pool should not be constructed less than one yard above seasonal high groundwater, uh, water elevation. Maximum levels of salts will be regulated on a case-by-case basis. Can't be constructed within five yards of a regulated area. There, there's a whole bunch of others that are no longer there. I think we kind of already got rid of the unenforceable ones. The ones that are left are good and should be enforced. We've eliminated the ones that were questionable. Let's use the ones we have. They're all very reasonable.
Alright, no, I agree, Rich. Go ahead, Carmine. Many of the filters that are being done today for residential pools use cartridges so that there is minimal backwash required. It's, it's more of a spillage of water when they're removing and reinstalling the cartridges.
Then it should be very simple to, uh, comply.
Really, a backwash would be a moot point if they're using a cartridge-type filter.
Alright.
Alright, any other comments, questions? Okay, if not, I'm, uh, Greg, I'm going to ask for a, uh.
I, I do have a concern there, Rich.
Go ahead, John.
Has this pool been reviewed for structural design?
It wouldn't be us. That would be the building department.
Well, I know in the past, we've always taken the structural design of such things into account. Um, before they've been approved. There just, has there been a, a structural analysis of this pool?
Again, it's not in our purview, John. Attorney Cordon, am I, uh, correct in that? Isn't that a building matter?
If it collapses, it becomes our purview.
Yeah, I don't.
But I'm saying, building oversees this, so it's their responsibility.
You remember the days of, uh, Kevin Chamberlain being on this commission? We looked at everything like this.
Yeah, well, Kevin was also a structural engineer.
We don't have a structural engineer anymore, so people look at this. So I, 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 from right now, I don't see any structural engineering plans in here. Rebarbed or anything like that, gonna tell me that that wall's not gonna fall over.
We would, of course, have the pool structurally engineered. Once we have, it's not putting the cart before the horse, but we would looking, we were looking to have, uh, a conservation wetland permit first before taking it to an engineer who would then engineer the pool. It'll be a fully engineered pool. It'll be a stamped drawing.
Okay, can, that'll be a condition of approval?
Yeah, and again, it's, it's under buildings purview. It's not us. Pardon?
Could that be in a condition of approval?
Be a condition of approval, but we don't really have authority over that. But if that's what you want, we'll put it in as a condition of.
I just turned something to the applicant about a conservation easement. Is that what, being offered just now?
Sorry, ma'am.
Did I hear something wrong?
I, I think Council, uh, Commissioner, you may have misheard. She re- referenced the, uh, our commission as the Conservation Commission, I think.
I'm sorry, that's what they call it in Western. I'm a Westonite. Forgive me.
Okay, no worries. No problem. I just, my ears light up when I hear some, something being offered.
Okay, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I'm used to conforming to a, a different authority than yours.
Alright, so we're good?
Yes.
Alright, Greg, I'm going to ask you to, uh, do a motion, uh, for approval of application twenty-five dash zero four.
I make a motion to approve application twenty-five oh four for a permit to permit approval to remove existing patios, walkways, steps to deck and fencing, construct new pool, patios, walkways, fencings, plantings, steps to deck, deck and associate, associated site improvements within a regulated area at six Vintage Road. From the town of Trumbull, in accordance to the following conditions, from the town of Trumbull Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission, section one, general conditions, one point one to one point one oh. Section two, site-specific conditions for approval for pools. Uh, section two point one four, two point one five, two point one six, and two point one seven. And it sounds like what I'm asking for is additional condition three point one, uh, that a, uh, stamped construction documents for the pool be submitted to engineering.
Well, that's going to be done when, uh, goes to the building, but you can add it on. We'll go for it.
Well, I thought John wanted that. I, yeah.
No problem.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, uh, Rich.
Uh, if, if we could just add one more, that any unsuitable fill or excavated soil, this is specific because of the pool. Any unsuitable fill or excavated soil shall be hauled offsite or deposited in a location approved by the town engineer and or her agent.
Alright, done. So done? Okay, I need a second on this, uh, motion. Okay, seconded by, well, Bob Frigno jumped up on it. Okay. Alright. Are you good, Greg? Have we missed anything? Okay, I'm gonna do a verbal. Um, Carmine, are you, yes?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
John?
Now.
Rich?
Yes.
I'm a yes. And have I missed somebody on here? I'm looking. I've got one, two. Okay, it passes six to one.
Oh, five to one, because he recused himself.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. That's who I'm missing in my mind. I forgot David is, uh, recused on this. Thank you, Rich. Five to one, it passes. Thank you.
We could get the vice chairman to, that would, uh, adequately lay his concerns.
Yeah, well, I, I have concerns about this thing collapsing and, and running down the hill into the water car.
And again, John.
Collaborate any further, Rich.
Alright, thank you. Attorney Cordon, am I wrong that it is under building purview, not our purview?
Well, I think the motion's been made and, and carried and it is.
No, but I'm just saying, that's my, my thoughts and, you know, that's what I thought on it, so.
The, the integrity of the, they would have to comply with the building code.
Right. Alright, let's move on to application twenty-five dash zero five. Trevor Dodds and Stephanie Requity. It is a permit approval for an in-ground pool, pool patio, pool fence, removal of twelve trees and soil risk redistribution to level backyard within a regulated area at six twenty-two Booth Hill Road. And, um, I see Colleen did bring back, uh, David Varespi is now back to, uh, our commission meeting. Good, sir. You'd like to introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, Trevor Dodds here and Stephanie. Good to see everyone again. Um, I can kick us off. Let me share my screen here. Okay, can everyone see, uh, a site plan here?
Yep.
Great. So, you know, since, since we spoke with you all last time and, um, and, and post the site walk, we've, we've taken a lot of the feedback and tried to incorporate it into the, the plan here, probably. First and foremost, there's, uh, a lot of concern over where the wetlands boundary was and, and a request to get it redrawn. So that has been done, uh, and is reflected in, in this new plan here. Uh, so i- it's this dash, you know, the dash line here, the, I guess, you know, the spark notes of it is, if, if you all recall, sort of the, the rough boundary, there's sort of like a point that, that came right up to where the pool, uh, proposed pool was, was going. That has shifted back a little bit, um, over on the left-hand side of the property. It, it's come in a little bit. Um, overall, not a massive change in, in overall wetlands in, in the property, but, um, you know, what it, what it did do is give a little more buffer between the pool and the, or the proposed pool and the wetlands boundary. Um, we've also, which I'll, you know, get into in, in a minute here, uh, pulled together a planting plan um, with, with solely engineering to, uh, to alleviate some of the other, uh, discussion points that we had uh, last session. The one, um, probably area of discussion which is related to the, to the planting plan, um, is our tree removal plan. Um, which we spoke through on the, on the site visit a little bit. Um, you can see up here in the top right, um, we, we are still proposing removal of twelve trees. Six of them are, are not in wetlands. Um, and there are six that are either right on the border or, or in, entirely in the wetlands. Uh, we do, we have submitted as part of this, um, some backup on these trees. Many of the trees that are in the wetlands are, are large, are leaning. You can see this one here leaning, you know, directly toward the house. Um, and have dropped large branches already, uh, and so.
We included those pictures as well. We've had our tree guy come out for a second time to go over each tree individually and inspect them and tell us the health of them, and most of them were not in good health. And, um, one of them, I think it's this one right here, is actually already, the roots in the back of it are actually already like lifting up. And it's leaning towards the house. The roots are lifting up and it's leaning towards the house. So he's like, this one's gonna fall. It's just a matter of when it falls. Um, there's another one that he could poke a hole, like, pretty much right through. It was so bad, in such bad condition. Um, again, huge branches falling in the yard uh, where the kids play, um, even more branches after last night's storm, um. So, yeah, safety is definitely an issue for us.
So as, as part of the plan to, to offset some of the, the tree removal, we have incorporated, you know, this new planting plan which includes, you know, the planting of, um, of seven new trees, uh, you know, to, to replace some of the twelve, and then providing, uh, you know, buffer plantings with pepper bushes, spice, spice bushes, royal ferns and, and lowbush blueberries, uh, sort of bordering, uh, wetlands to provide, you know, the, the buffer. Uh, happy to, you know, dive into, you know, a- any piece of this. Those are sort of the, the spark notes and the big follow-ups uh, from, uh, you know, our last meeting and, and the site visit. Um, but I'll, I'll pause there and we can field questions.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Bob Frigno and, uh, David to get their thoughts on the, uh, planting plans to kind of offset the, uh, tree removal.
Yeah, question mark, uh, who was the individual that did the assessment?
Um, the planting plan?
No, the, the trees and, and selection of trees.
Scott Petit from, uh, Total Lawn and Tree.
Was he a licensed arborist?
Uh, he is licensed. I don't know if he's a licensed arborist, but he is licensed.
A licensed arborist should determine the quality of the tree, those trees.
I would say he's probably qualified, um, but I can double check if he's an arborist versus.
Should be a state, should be a state large arborist, like, it should be a Connecticut state arborist. They should have a license, a four-digit license number.
We'll look, we'll look it up while we're chatting here.
Because when I went, I looked at trees, I was looking at only three, very small Connecticut licensed arborists. Three of the trees, so I was curious how we went from three to twelve.
Well, six, we, we were focusing mainly on the six that were in the wetlands that, that were concerned.
Yeah, when we were out there, when we were out there, we didn't really establish what the wetlands were. We weren't clear where the.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yep, that was a, that was a point of concern. Yep.
So you're saying that six of the trees are?
Yeah, so now here in the top, this is sort of a zoomed in map up here, uh.
Could you blow that up, please?
Yeah, let me. Is that okay? I can't go anymore to the right.
Okay.
Can I see it? Um, so you can see, you know, there, there's two over here on the right that are, that are big and, and leaning outside of wetlands. There's, you know, four over on the far left-hand side of the property, you know, sort of where the retention system is gonna go um, outside, and then there's this cluster here of six, uh, right on, you know, these three are a little further in. Uh, these three are sort of on the line, and I have, it's easier, I can sort of show you. That helps you here. This is the plan. So picture one and two will focus on this cluster right here. Uh, so this.
Yeah, the leaning trees, yeah, apparently, yeah, that's, that's pretty obvious, leaning trees.
Yeah, the leaning one, this one, um, next to it, which is here, I believe, or maybe it's this one. I need to jog my memory. Um, is right there. This is another one of the leaning one. Uh, let me just reorient here for three. So picture three and four, this is this big fourteen-foot one.
That's the one that's, the roots are coming up.
This is the one where the roots are coming up. Let's show you that picture here. This one here, so it's right on the edge, uh, so I don't know if you recall this one here.
Yes.
Yep. And then there is one, I don't know that we have a great picture. It's, it's the one right here. So, this one.
They, uh, just correction, there, there, there are additions to the numbers. It could be more than, it could be more than four. It could be up to five, it could be six. Like correction on that. The, the tree, as you're looking into the tree, uh, the yard, are the trees to the right of the house? Were those being taken down as well?
These two?
Yes.
They were marked. Yeah, they were marked.
And he checked those trees out and he said they were, should be removed. For what reason? Do you remember?
Um, yeah, so there, well, a couple different reasons. These have huge branches also falling. Um, this one right here is just super close to the house, um. And this one is just another one that's in decline and, um, kind of leaning over the house.
Okay.
As well.
Okay.
And they're all sort of leaning towards the proposed, uh, pool area too.
Alright, in the interim, uh, David.
I'm finished, yeah, I'm finished, Mr. Chairman, with my questions. Thank you.
I know that. David, um, did you have a chance to review the planting plan?
Uh, I did not pick up my packet today, uh, and it's not available digitally in the packets that were sent, so no, I have not. Um, if they can put it up on the screen, I can take a cursory glance at the moment. Um, who was this planting plan prepared by and why wasn't it digitally available?
It was only sent, uh, today, yesterday, maybe.
Can you send, email it to me, Tatiana?
Sure.
Okay, while you're emailing, let me go to the other. Okay, while you're emailing, let me go to the other part, uh, commissioners. Any other comments, questions?
You're the chair.
Go ahead, Carmine.
I have a problem with the stumps being removed, especially with the six that are in the wetlands. And there's another one on the far left that's right on the edge. In removing those stumps, I feel they will be disturbing the wetlands.
So were you planning on, uh, stumping or are you grinding these down?
It's right there in the note.
I'm asking again, you know, but I'm saying.
Um, so that was something we also asked, um, the, the tree guy about in his, um, thing with the roots, as he showed us, well, well, a couple reasons, a couple things. Um, the root systems of all these trees are big and going kind of through the yard, and they're a hazard, uh, for tripping and falling. We have kids running around our yard, and we'd like them to be able to do that. Um, another thing is, he was saying that these root systems are, are big, and it's gonna be almost impossible to dig and plant the new healthy plants in our, like, proposed, um, planting plan. So it would be easier to do that for the sake of planting the new plants than leaving the roots behind and then having to kind of get rid of the roots to plant the new plants.
All right, let me go to, uh, Bob, who's our arborist. What are your thoughts?
It disturbed a lot of the soils and a lot of wetland areas, uh, Mr. Chairman. When you start digging up those roots, you're gonna get a machine in there. It's gonna do a lot of, uh, I think it would disturb a lot of.
I'm saying, could you, um, you know, cut these low but leave the, uh, you know, the stumps there?
Is that a question for us?
Yes. That's what I was asking, uh, before I saw the notation, because again, it's gonna undermine the integrity of the, uh, the wetlands and all that, so.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, David.
The soils are the regulated resource, and removing the stumps is gonna create a huge amount of disturbance, particularly with the trees and stumps that are in the wetlands. Um, this commission has generally not had a practice of approving removal of stumps and trees within the wetlands boundaries. Um, and if those stumps were ground down, you could do the planting, um, they could get the, the new plants in. Yes, it's gonna be more difficult. Yes, you're gonna have to break through some roots to get those plants in. But, you know, destruction of those root systems to get the new plant material in, you know, the trees are already gonna be gone, so it's not gonna negatively affect them. Um, so that, that is my two cents on that situation.
Through the chair.
Um, go ahead, Rich.
Uh, yeah, I agree with Mr. Varespi. Um, generally, we've tried to find a difference between simply grinding a stump down and, and derouting an entire yard, um. You know, there's, there's a, another, as, as I look at the older erosion regulations, it says here that obviously we weren't gonna be burying, um, it says there are absolutely no material manmade or otherwise, including dead and/or removed vegetation. It lists a bunch of other things, but including stumps shall be deposited or buried in any regulated area. Um, is there some happy medium we can find where they can grind the stumps? And we're not gonna touch the roots, because if, if they wanna make the roots something that's no longer a tripping hazard, we can understand that. Um, the only problem is, there's, there's only two ways to do that. It's by removing them, which is gonna require importation of fill, or they import fill to cover them anyway. Either way, they're gonna be importing fill. We find a way that we can allow them to do that without actually burying the stump. Is that possible?
Well, I think part of the, the, that regulation is there was a long history of removing stumps completely and then doing a berry hole on the property and putting every, all the stumps in one big berry hole. Um, we don't want that to occur, and that's where that regulation or that recommendation came from. Um, leaving the stumps in place and, you know, adding some soil over to cover the surface roots, um, is something that is customarily done, um, to create lawns, et cetera.
Well, there we go. We, we, we modify it so they're able to, I don't wanna say import fill, that's, that's a wrong impression. To bring in some small amount of soil to.
Topsoil.
The topsoil to level out the area, to make it safe for children. We still retain the stump. It, it can be ground down, but there, there's not gonna be a sinkhole where it was, which is another issue. If they remove the stump completely and fill it with soil, we've seen sinkholes happen, uh, which is a far worse hazard for, uh, for tripping. But if. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'm done. Go ahead, Carmine.
Go ahead, Carmine.
Um, David and Bob, am I correct in my definitions that the stump is the portion where the tree is and the root system extends outward around the stump? Under that situation, I don't see any problem with cutting away any of the roots that are in the way outside of the wetlands, but the stump itself should be left alone.
Correct.
Correct, yes. As David said, Mr. Chairman, uh, as David said, yeah, as David said, it may be more difficult planting the plants in the root system, but it can be done without removing the entire, entire plant, entire root system for 12 trees.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Tatiana.
Uh, there was a question about a pipe discharging from a neighboring property. Um, has there been a, has any information come through regarding what was that?
Um, so Tatiana, I, um, asked our neighbor and they have no idea. They don't, they didn't know of them being discharged, of course. Um, they, you know, said whatever was there was there with the house being built. Um, my, uh, one of the contractors, the contractor that would be doing our drainage had looked at it, and he said it's likely coming from the downspouts, um. So.
Okay, so I think I'm gonna have to work with your engineer, because during inspection, obviously, there was an area of standing water. That's why a question of, um, wetlands flagging came up. Um, but moving the stormwater system toward the house, maybe a pool a little bit more is no problem. But when you also have additional runoff from a neighboring property, first of all, it's not in your best interest to keep it there, um, but, you know, it's, it's kind of up to you to resolve. But then the stormwater system kind of will, may, may get a little bit overwhelmed with trading not only your runoff, but also, you know, some additional. Um, so we're gonna have to revise that slightly, um.
So we would definitely move.
Mm-hmm.
The neighbor, like, we would want that moved. Um, unless there's.
Might be, excuse me, might be a legal question involved with your attorney to find out if you have David that can actually continually dump water from this property directly out here. Might be, uh, maybe, uh, for a counselor, maybe Jeff could address that.
Yep.
Thanks. But you're not opposed to, uh, moving the stormwater system, um?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, David.
Um, looking back through the emails, and Tatiana, I did not get the planting plan yet. I'm not sure if you've sent it, but there was a question of whether the, uh, standing water towards the back of the property was a vernal pool or not. And the, it does not seem, it's not conclusive as to whether that's a vernal pool or not, but there were frog egg masses found, um, and it certainly would meet a lot of the criterias for that sort of vernal pool. Um, I'm just looking for more information to come back from Mr. McManus about that. It does not appear as though he actually submitted a soils report or wetlands report, just the flagging. Um, so that's still a, a huge question. Question mark in my mind.
Yeah, he, he came out, there was a single, yeah, a single bullfrog egg, and he's gonna come back out in a couple weeks, he said, and just check to see if there is any, any development on it. Um, and he has the soil report. We haven't received it yet either. We're hoping to do before tonight's meeting, uh, that, that we can submit and, and certainly work with you on the, uh, the vernal pool. If, you know, if there's more development there.
Tatiana, were you able to, uh, send the, uh, planting plan over to David?
Yeah, I sent it at eight fourteen. It says, but it likely goes through Barracuda. So maybe that's why, David, you're not seeing it. I'm wondering if, um, the applicant could put it on the screen, maybe?
Yeah, let me pull it up at least.
Or, or maybe some other commission members could forward it to David.
It's up.
Yeah, thanks.
Who prepared this?
Uh, this is solely engineering.
Okay.
Mary Blackburn.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's a little hard, it's a little hard to see here, but.
Oh, yeah, I'm trying to fit it in one place for you, but I got it.
Yeah, as soon as I get it, I'll, I'll have to look at this a little bit more in, in depth. Um, it's hard to see with the trees and everything that she's got removed.
Um, Mary generally does a pretty good job, but could, could we, if we were to approve this, could we do it on the condition that, uh, you'd work with the, uh, town engineer and with David helping her to, uh, you know, make sure the proper, uh, shrubs are put in there? Would, would you agree to that?
Yes.
All right. Okay, Tatiana, do you feel there's anything missing, uh, from this application for us to approve? Are you good?
I'm happy to work with the applicant under any conditions that the commission fellows should apply.
All right, 'cause earlier you said, they, they are going to move the, uh, system over to, uh, away from the standing water, right? Okay. Carmine, did you have a question? Oh, no, is it Rich? Go ahead.
No, I have a question regarding, I think it was mentioned that there's some fill coming in.
Not, not coming in. I think, um, I, I mean, when they dig for the pool, there'll be fill, but I don't think there's any fill coming in.
Okay, so you're just gonna be distributing that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In parts of the backyard?
Yeah, mainly over here.
Well, I guess mainly to do the, whatever happens with the stumps.
Yeah.
Through the chair.
Rich suggested.
Go ahead, Rich.
Um, thank you. Uh, yeah, there's a, we had a condition about the fill, just like we did with the last applications. It's very, uh, very simple to, to comply with. Also, for the, uh, pool conditions, um, are we assuming we're gonna attach the same ones here?
Yep.
Okay, um, uh, once, you want Greg to make the motion, and I could, uh.
Uh, before we make a motion, I wanna abstain on this vote. I have some feelings from when this, this was approved before, and I, I can't vote on this.
All right, so you'll be abstaining.
Okay.
All right, Greg. Okay, we get a motion on application twenty-five dash zero five to approve.
I make a motion to approve application twenty-five oh five, a permit for approval for an in-ground pool, pool patio, pool fence, removal of 12 trees, and soil redistrib- redistribution to level backyard within a regulated area at 622 Booth Hill Road in accordance to the following conditions. From the Town of Trumbull's Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission, section one, general conditions one point one to one point one oh. Site-specific conditions for approval for pools, two point one four, two point one five, two point one six, and two point one seven. And additional conditions, three point one, the proposed trees to be cut down in the wetlands area, stumps are to be left in place. Three point two, applicant to work with engineering to relocate the stormwater system so that it is away from that standing water. Three point three, applicant, um, I'm not quite sure how to word this one. Applicant needs to, uh, submit a final status on the, on the vernal pool or pond um, to, uh, Trumbull's Engineering Department. Three point four, applicant to work with Commissioner Varespi and Town Engineer to confirm approval of a planting plan.
Okay, just to correct that, uh, for a moment, Greg. The applicant won't be working with, uh, Commissioner Varespi. They would be working with the Town Engineer, who will be working with, uh.
Okay. Applicant to work with Town Engineer, uh, to confirm approval of a planting plan.
Mr. Chairman, can I suggest the other, uh, the other two conditions?
Sure, go for it.
Uh, these are on the old list, formerly number twenty-two and twenty-eight. Um, one of them we just used, which was all unsuitable fill and/or excavated soil shall be hauled offsite or deposited in a location approved by the Town Engineer and/or her agent. That's referring to the, um, the areas being, uh, covering the roots.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Tatiana.
Town engineering would don't approve any locations. You know, it's up to the applicant to find a suitable legal location or dump site, but we would not take any private fill, nor do we monitor that.
Okay, this, this is, I mean, we, we just approved it in the last application. It was talking about, um, if they're gonna be moving fill from the same site. Are you referring to imported fill, Tatiana?
I think, I think the condition that, excuse me, you're citing is that if any fill is unsuitable, it has to be removed offsite to a location approved by the engineering. And like I said, we do not approve those locations. So if the applicant has some unsuitable material while they're excavating a pool, it will be up to them to find a, a dump site that will take that material. Uh, but I would suggest that no debris shall be buried in the wetlands. Uh, I'm sure that's what the commission is ultimately looking for.
Right, the, the other one, um, so to fix the first one, we'd say, a, a, an unsuitable fill. Okay, the depositing in the location is, is referring to not where they're dumping it offsite, but rather if they're placing it on the, in the, in the regulated area. If they wanted to truck it offsite, they can bring it wherever it's in approved place.
Right.
Um, the other, so let me just clarify that so we can have it proper, and if, if you don't like it, we can remove it, but all unsuitable fill and/or excavated soil shall be hauled offsite or, or if deposited onsite in a location approved by the Town Engineer and/or her agent. Is that better, Tatiana?
Um, I, I mean, so they're just excavating for the pool. They're not bringing any fill, right?
Correct. So if they have any, any unsuitable fill they happen to dig up, they're either gonna remove it, or they're gonna, if it's gonna be deposited in a location onsite, that's up to the Town Engineer to approve it. They're not gonna come back to us for it. They don't need to.
Okay, fine.
Okay, the other one was, um, referring to the stumps. Do you want that one as well, uh, Mr. Chairman?
They already did it.
Already done.
Through the chair.
No, no, it's about the burial of the stumps, not the stumping itself.
Um, right now, I don't think they're burying any stumps on the, uh, property, so.
Then we're good.
Through, through the chair.
Go ahead, Carmine.
In addition to the six trees that are inside the wetland, there are two to the left behind the drainage system that are very close to the wetland, and I feel that those stumps should also remain.
I believe we're talking that, um, now, remember, those trees are still in the regulated area. I'm considering that all 12 would, would not be ground down. The stumps would be left. considering that all twelve would not be ground down. The stumps would be left.
Well, there's two that are gonna be in the way of the unless that drainage gets moved far enough away, there's two that are definitely gonna have to be removed.
Well, if that's the case, then that will be done, but right now, um, that'll be worked out with Tatiana and the applicant. All right?
Okay, so no stumps unless in the way of the drainage?
Yeah, she'll uh she'll work that out with them.
Yeah.
Um, through the chair.
Go ahead, Tatiana.
Uh, I believe condition three point one referred to specific stumps, so could we please correct that to what the commission wants to do with the tree stumps?
Uh, my understanding is that all the trees, the uh the stumps would remain, so.
Greg, can you re- re- reread three point one, please?
Proposed trees to be cut down in regulated areas, stumps are to be left in place.
Okay.
Thank you.
Stumps and root system, right?
Well, I thought we were allowing them to cover the roots in order to make it a safer area for children.
But we're not removing.
Correct.
Two different things, stumps and roots.
Right, exactly.
All right, so can we uh, are we good now?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, are we, shouldn't we add that we were explicitly allowing them to do that, or is that already assumed?
Allowing them to do what, Rich?
Uh, to import the or put the topsoil to make it safer for the kids?
Yeah, well, they're going to be taking their pool soil, and I think they'll have quite a bit there. And if they need to do a little topsoil over it, I think they'll, you know, they'll work with the town engineer on that.
Okay, I'll second it.
All right.
Through the chair. Last thing, um, if uh commission wants to consider uh two point one about erosion controls also that they're uh maintained appropriately during construction.
All right, so you've got that, Greg?
Yep.
All right. Are we good? Hey, Greg uh made the motion. I'm trying to think who who did the second. Was it uh Bob or Rich? Rich? Okay, so we have it uh all done. Um, John Loria has abstained, so I will do a verbal vote if I can ask the applicant to remove the uh plan from the screen. All right, Carmine, are you yes or no?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
David?
No.
Rich?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so it passes five to uh one and with one abstention. All right. So we're good on that.
Okay.
Okay, good night and good luck on it.
Um, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, well, Greg's working on that. Carmine, can you read the uh public notice for me, please?
Good, and Greg?
Now, Greg is working on the uh.
I could get it.
I could.
Got it? Okay. Yeah. Um.
Here's a notice that uh the inland wetlands and watercourses commission of the town of Trumbull is holding a public hearing on Tuesday, April first at seven P M via video conference for application twenty five oh two Philip Reardon Jr. Permit approval to fill in pool use existing pool footprint and pool walls for a barn foundation, remove shed, pool, cabana, concrete pool patio and slate patio around the pool, install new driveway, plant privacy trees behind bar, potential mudroom installed where the slate patio is off dwelling behind the garage within a regulated area at one fifty nine Plymouth Avenue. A copy of the applications and maps are on file in the town engineer's office and on the town of Trumbull website. Public comment was to be sent to C Lombardo at Trumbull Connecticut gov uh twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting. Public comment can be made via phone or video conference connection uh at the public hearing dated Trumbull, Connecticut, this fifth day of March twenty twenty five. Richard H Gerard, Senior Chairman, Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission, the town of Trumbull.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, I believe Attorney Rizzio uh is going to be representing them, if you would.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Raymond Rizzio with an office at ten Saskahill Road, Fairfield, Connecticut, and we represent Philip and Melanie Reardon with regard to this property at one fifty nine Plymouth Avenue. Uh, we spent a lot, good part of the last thirty days working through some of the issues with engineering, and I think we've come to a point where we have something which would be satisfactory to everyone. Um. Let's, as we as we start off with this application, what you have to remember is this is a barn that is constructed over a concrete pool. So there was no excavation, there was no change done to the pool walls, and he built this structure over of a over a over a pool. What he'd like to do, though, is if you walk the site, there is a shed, there's a um there's a pool, there's a pool house, like kind of cabana. He wants to remove those which are closer to the wetlands, and within that, he's gonna install some buffer trees, which you see some, there's a planting plan that has been submitted, which we'll go through in a little bit. Um, which will put some um basically evergreens, um, six thirty seven, thirty inches on center, six to seven feet in height. Um, and you can see them up around the plan. They're the, you you can see the trees uh up top. Now, what happens is you also in dealing with it's kind of, it's just been a a question of, you know, it's hard to believe that we the pool, which is a concrete structure, that it doesn't count as impervious, but it really is impervious. It's concrete walls. We're going over that. Um, he also, as you can see, would like to add down in the future a mudroom and a uh additional um uh mudroom for an additional bedroom and master suite, but as you can see, that's about, that's on the original house, and it's just within the regulated area, but it's probably eighty feet or something from it. And it's it's a long way. As you can see, it's toward the back of the existing house. It shows a future, future addition. We're also gonna add a gravel driveway that will take you to this barn. Um. The big additions that we have from the plan, since you've seen, is that the installation of a rain garden, if you could see it directly east of the barn. Um, Chris, if you can pull up the rain garden and planting plan. Um, there it goes, and this is what it's gonna look like coming up. Okay, so what you see is these, the planting plan here talks about the eastern white pines that are gonna be um buffer plants between that and the wetlands. Then what you have is the shrub, the shrubs that'll go, you see the detail of the plant list, and then you see what the rain garden's built like. These two infra, these two structures that are gonna go into the rain garden will be coming off. The upper one will be coming off the gutters from the barn. The lower one will be coming off probably the gutter, the front gutters of the barn, and then also some water that'll be directed either by swale or pipe from the driveway. Um, there you see the rain garden, the uh a material. We talked about possibly building a a a berm, a six-inch berm along the driveway to direct the water into this rain garden. Um, we we're gonna continue to work out to finalize those details with Tatiana. We talked about that today. But in the end, what you see is up, the you've all, I think you've all walked the property. Um. He's basically cleaning up a mess that was from a previous owner. You have a cabana that was falling down. You have a patio that was falling down, and you have a new structure going over an existing concrete structure. No filling of any wetlands, no touching of any wetlands. You'll now have a a a border of uh white pines between the wetlands and the barn. Um, all of this will basically reduce the amount of uh use of anything closer to the wetlands, because you, as you say, the barn is replacing a pool. Um, and that is an interior structure. You can see the new driveway that's going in, which will be um uh pervious materials. It'll be basically a gravel driveway. And that's the application. If you walked it, you've seen it. It's a huge improvement. There's been no, um, there there were a couple of dead trees that had to be removed. Um. And that's that's kind of it. Um, we've we've, as I said, we've worked hard to work through a number of issues with engineering, and we'll continue to do that as we go to meet the stormwater. As one of the conditions, I think, in talking to Tatiana, will be, you know, uh satisfaction of stormwater uh stormwater management um requirements. And that's basically it. We're adding, we're basically getting rid of um rid of structures that are in the, that are in the um in the regulated area, providing a buffer, providing a rain garden where there is none, and there will have been no drain, no, no drainage uh um uh structure, and then building this barn on top of an existing patio. We'll be adding where there was previously no, you know, if a pool overflowed or everything else, there was nowhere to direct the water. This barn will collect any rain in gutters, and the gutters will then discharge into this rain garden. So I don't, I I, we don't see any negative impact on the wetlands. In fact, we see an improvement of the overall condition on the property. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, um, Tatiana, if you wanna give us your thoughts?
Uh, yeah, we we've discussed with the Attorney Rizzio today. Um, we can definitely work through our stormwater system, and otherwise they've addressed uh questions, I believe, from the commission, so I don't have anything.
All right, so you're satisfied there? All right. Questions from the uh commission comments?
Through the chair.
Go ahead, David. Uh, did you have a chance to uh look at plantings?
Yeah, I'm looking at the plantings. Um, the rain garden seems um adequate. Um, I would recommend doubling the number of white pines, just making the line a little bit longer through there. Um, they're only planting them at seventy-eight foot height, which are pretty small. Um. That would just be my recommendation. Um, just a question, and I know it's not within our purview. I'm just curious as to Mr. Rizzio's thoughts on this. I know accessory structures are limited in size. Is this proposed barn need a variance or?
The the barn did get a variance.
Okay, just.
Yeah, so everything's set with zoning, everything's set with building. The issue became confusion as to whether you're putting a pool on top of a patio. Is it, is it, you know, what we, I always think I I I've been enlightened after all these years that under the Trump regs, they look at a concrete pool as not being impervious. But I mean, I don't, I I I don't know that you can have a more impervious structure than a concrete pool. So that's been, that's been kind of what's been arising. The client thought he had done everything right. He went and got his variance. He went and got his building permit, and and then everything kind of went from there. But we've we've spent a lot of time working with, working the, working through these issues with the town, and I think in the end, we we all end up with a better project that's more sensitive and protects the wetlands. And and we have no objection to adding uh four more additional white pines in a line to create a better buffer.
Thank you. Through the chair.
Um, go ahead, Rich.
Um, Mr. Verespi, just a question. Dave, are these, you at the standard U S Forest Service pines, as we've seen those in other properties? They require um somewhat minimal maintenance, but they just have to be uh planted at the correct uh spacing from each other. Correct.
I think our plan says, uh, what is it, thirty inches on center?
No, it would need to be, that's more than thirty inches on center shown on the plan.
What what Commissioner Verespi, we're happy to, if you can call out where you, what kind of?
Continue the same spacing as shown on the plan, you know, ten to twelve foot on center.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I also want to know about the the added one. Sorry, thank you.
Hey, any other questions, comments from the uh commission? Okay, this is a uh public hearing, so I'm going to ask Mr. Chin if there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak. In fact, I think what we'll do is let's remove the uh plan for now until uh okay, thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, it looks like Barbara Johnson would like to speak, and she's coming in as panelist now.
Okay.
Hello?
Eddie, you're on, and if you can identify yourself and give your address, I would appreciate it.
Uh, this is Barbara and Arthur Johnson. We live at one fifty-three Plymouth Avenue, so we are the next door neighbor of Mr. Phil Reardon. And um we had sent, uh, last time I listened in, and I had compiled a letter to you um stating what had happened in our neighborhood, um, because we were not at the initial hearing, because we feel that we were duped by our neighbor. Um, we have a serious flooding issue um as a result of Phil's reduction of the foliage, both the trees, um bushes surrounding the uh the uh pool area. The pool area, um, the actual pool, it looks like Phil went around the pool area to the cement, but we are very, very, very concerned. Uh, we're concerned that we are continuing to have flooding. We are concerned that we lost total privacy, because he took down a lot of those trees. Um, and quite frankly, devalued our property. He boasted to me several times how he increased his value, but he didn't increase our value, and he created a lot of problems for us. Um, if you go around the neighborhood, they will all be telling you the same thing, is that he stated what he was building was a stately barn. A stately barn connotates that it is going to be used for his yard. We thought nothing of it. Um, the next thing I knew is that he was building, so he actually started building twice without a permit. Um, he was asked to cease and desist at the end of January, but he continued. Last week, he was tivecking, tivecking the place. So I understand he's increasing his value, but I I put a lot of time and effort into researching what was going on. I sent a letter to the commission, and I please, I I would like you to address what I have outlined in this uh letter to you guys. Have you guys all seen it and read it?
Uh, Tatiana?
Oh, that that letter was sent to the commission. Um. Ms. Johnson, could you, Ms. Uh, could you please um remind me when it was sent? In February?
February tenth.
Yeah, so that that was sent to the commission a couple of months ago, and I'm not sure, Colleen, maybe you could uh resend it if you were able.
Oh.
All right, now, what I was gonna ask is I don't have readily access to uh to it. Can you uh sort of give us an overview of the uh letter? Because I don't have it in my hand right now.
Okay, um, so I sent it because I was asked to send it and and, you know, express our concern over what had happened. Um, Mr. Reardon Jr. had approached um my husband, Arthur, and neighbors prior to getting his variance. What he stated to the entire neighborhood was a stately barn, as I just mentioned. Um, it did not say anything, and his note didn't say anything about taking down trees or shrubs or removing or putting in a driveway. Um, but actually, he he really didn't tell the truth, because as as you know, the structure is enormous. It takes away the privacy. I believe what it's intended for is for large vehicles, um, which is not something that is conducive to our neighborhood. We have kids riding around in bikes. We have a lot of pets, people jogging, and I'm very concerned. Um, I think that the removal of the shrubs and the trees, and in my letter, I actually showed pictures of what happens when it rains. There's flooding in our backyard, and even Mr. Reardon has flooding in his side yard as a result of rain. So I'm not sure. I understand that he's putting in foliage foliage or trees in the back, but there's nothing in our side now. It's totally open. So think about it this way. We have flooding. We now have a, instead of a beautiful piece of property, we have a huge structure. That structure is tilted towards our house, and it's not, in in the plan, it states thirty-eight point one feet. That is not thirty-eight point one feet from our yard, and it looks right into our kitchen. So the size of the structure is enormous. It's a lot different than what he stated to us. Um, we're very concerned with the runoff of water. Um, we're very concerned with the runoff of water, um, you know, as I mentioned. And we were very surprised, I think not only, you know, us, but the entire neighborhood were surprised that Mr. Reardon didn't even tell us there was a planned driveway, that it was going to be used not for, as a barn, as a barn as defined in the, the dictionary. But for his commercial use. So, you know, we, we are very upset, um, you know, we've lived here for thirty years. And have had nothing but a pleasant experience, and as a result of these changes, it has really, you know, it's really affected us. And if Art, you want to say something?
Well, I was a little duped, unfortunately, he went and got everyone else's signature, and right before the hearing, he comes to me. So it didn't give me time to shut it down, basically, and.
What hearing, uh, what hearing are you talking about, uh, Mr. Johnson?
The zoning, uh, the.
Is that the ZBA or the planning and zoning?
Planning and zoning, I assume. So it, it was just the way he went about it, I didn't see a plan, this structure is huge. And he put a gambrel on the sides, i- it's just obtrusive. And he originally came to me and said, because I have these old hemlocks that are deteriorating. And we kept them up because Patricia Gift was ill and she wanted to stay, so we granted her wish. So he came to me and said, well, he would like to plant new, uh, arbivites. And he said, well, we'll split the cost. Well, this was before this proposed plan. So now he's providing trees behind the structure, but not providing any privacy for me.
And that privacy, it's also the water.
Now also, my sub pump normally doesn't go on in the winter. It has been going on more frequently now than ever. So the original owners, when we first moved here, was Bob and Joyce Coombs. He had some sort of pump back there that he used to pump water near his pool back into the pond. Patricia Gift never knew about that, but I remember Bob Coombs telling me about that. So there's always been a water problem back there. So, you know, I know you guys searched everything out, but all of a sudden my sub pump's going on more. And, uh, you know, this impervious pool, whatever. You could tell me anything you want, but I just, I'm seeing more water problems. And, uh, you know, he has to come through with some kind of privacy too. I mean, the whole way he went about this was really shady. It was rude.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I think if, you know, if you were in our situation, and, um, we know that there's always been water issues. Because, uh, Doc Ward, um, this is, uh, our neighbors to the other side. He had proposed, um, building a house, and it was, this was on a lot. And actually, the, the water kind of flows in the back of, there was a stream, it kind of flows in the back of our yard into that open lot. And it was shut down by the town because of the water issues that we face. So it's not only the water issues, but it's a matter of privacy, it's a matter of noise. For three, I think it's been almost three months, I actually, uh, in my kitchen, these guys were looking into my kitchen in the mornings for about two months, you know, making a lot of noise. And I, I was shocked, I went over and I tried to talk to Phil, I said, Phil, what is going on? And he said basically, oh, you're too late, um, this is none of your business, you don't own this land, or the, I'm, I'm the new neighbor and I can do whatever I want. And he was very, very pompous in his attitude toward me. Um, I was really upset, but he said, there's nothing you can do because I got it approved. And he was building away, and then, um, I saw another neighbor up the street, and he said, listen, Barb. He goes, I tried to get a porch put on my front house, and he said it was fought. So he goes, you go to town hall and find out what's going on. So in January thirty-first, I went to find out, and he didn't even have the proper permits to start building yet. So then, a cease and desist order was put in, and he still kept building. So I don't know, I feel like, you know, the neighbor, the neighborhood is all kind of upset at this, the way he went about this. Because no one would have approved a commercial, large structure on the side of the house, which was going to have a driveway to the street where he's going in and out with his vehicles, he still goes in and out of his vehicles now. So I think this is not fair to the neighborhood. I mean, it's really not fair to us, because the first thing that I would have loved to see, to see have been done, um, is for him to come over and talk with us and say, hey, listen, let, let's try to figure this out, but he didn't. He went around us instead, and I did put together, um, a very comprehensive letter with pictures, with diagrams of the water. Um, the distance between the barn, which is thirty-eight point one feet in the diagram, I went to zoning and planning, and I got a picture of it. So, you know, it may sound like everything was just rosy, but absolutely not. The way this transpired, um, it, it was devastating, really.
And I think we should have our house reevaluated, because we pay a, a lot in taxes here, more than every other neighbor, and I don't know why. But we definitely got devaluated now.
But I, you know, I feel that at a minimum, I think, you know, the, the water, the privacy in the back for, I don't know, you know, for and the water issue, it's also an issue for us on the side. Um, it's always been an issue, and I would really appreciate if you guys can consider what we're facing and also make amendments, I don't know if the lawyers on the phone, but also try to think through what would help uh, us, um, in terms of a buffer, in terms of privacy, in terms of water mitigation. That's the, that's the only fair thing to do.
Hi Chairman, can, may I add something as well?
Okay, is this Mr. Zeeman?
Zemanic, yes.
Zemanic, oh, I, I only see the Zemanic, if you can, uh, state your name and your address, sir?
Yeah, so my name is Matt Zemanic, I am a resident at one thirty-nine Plymouth Avenue. So I am Barbara and Art's other neighbor on their, their other side. Um, and I understand this is a, a sensitive subject for the neighborhood, but I just wanted to, to provide kind of a, a third perspective here. That I, I think it may be important for the, the board here to consider. Um, but as Art and Barbara had noted, the overall circumstances surrounding the build um, was a little bit non-transparent. When the signatures were collected, it was communicated that it was more in line to build more of what we understood to be a, a standard sized shed. Um, when the letter was signed, there was no communication of any sort of existing plans. None of that was included with any sort of the, any, any sort of communication of the build to take place. It was more of just, hey, I'm planning on, on adding a shed, would you consider this? And without knowing kind of that, that underlying story there, a majority of the neighborhood signed without any issue. Um, so I think that's important to consider. The other thing I would add as well is, I know in, in the walkthrough of the plans earlier tonight, the representation mentioned that a few dead trees were taken out. The other thing I would consider is, it was more than a few dead trees. There was an entire line of trees between that property and Barbara's property that was taken out prior to any sort of build. Um, the way our houses are set up is our na- our backyards kind of align to one another. Um, in prior years, we could look across through our backyard and, and see nothing but trees, nothing but green. When I look out now, we see this significant building in that place. Um, so fully aligned to, to Barbara's thoughts there, where in addition to any sort of trees on the back of the, the sh- the, the shed or, or whatever we're referring to it as. I think it, it also needs to be considered a substantial build in between properties as well, for both the water aspect, but also just a, a matter of privacy also. So just wanted to provide a, a third perspective, I, I understand it's a, a sensitive topic, but, um, definitely understand kind of the sentiment felt by Barbara and Art as well.
All right, is there anyone else from the, uh, public that wishes to, uh, speak?
Again, if there are members of the public that would like to make a comment, please press the, uh, raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or star nine if you're on the phone.
No one at this time, Mr. Chin?
Well, there does not appear to be any other, uh, residents making, uh, wishing to make comment.
Unfortunately, what you've brought up, most of it's out of our purview. These are things that should have been brought up, unfortunately, to, uh, ZBA if it went before them, to planning and zoning. As far as what plants were there, now, again, we're looking at this after it had, uh, been started. Attorney Cordone, give me your thoughts on, uh, on what your thoughts are on this. I mean, um, basically, let's see where we can help them in, uh, in some of their, uh, their issues.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I just want to keep the, the process of this meeting in a proper structure. And I see that Mr. and Mrs. Johnson have raised their hand again, so the public should complete their public comments, and then with the, the commission should have further discussion with the applicant. So if Mr. and Mrs. Johnson have anything else to say, or any other ma- public members, they should complete their comments this time.
All right, but I am correct in that most of their issues are now in our purview.
I, I, I will answer that, yes, counsel, um, Mr. Chairman, I will answer that question.
Mr. and Mrs. Johnson, did you have any other comments?
Um, I just, I just want to reiterate the importance of when you, you talk about water mitigation and drainage. That affects us, so that structure is actually a lot closer to, very close to our, um, property. I would say not in line with the thirty-eight point one feet. So the water issue is an issue that permeates our yard too. And I would like you to, your wetlands, and I would like you to address that. Um, and I think that Phil and his lawyer, um, in, you know, could, certainly can help to, to try to rectify the problem. Um, you know, we have been here for a very long time, and there's no reason why we need to suffer as a result of, you know, his, his commercial structure coming up. And not only that, and not only that, but he, he didn't even follow the proper proceed- procedure. He had no right to start building, and he did it twice. So he started, he started when he didn't have permission, and then he restarted when he didn't have permission. And I sent, I spent a lot of time researching and providing perspective to the entire committee, and I would hope that, that it sounds like no one received it, but I really would hope that, um, it is read. And I just have to know, Colleen, are you still on the line? Yes, I am. Colleen, did they get the letter?
Yeah, M- Mr. Chairman, this is not a, a, a dialogue between, so we do have to keep the proper structure. Ms. Johnson, I can assure you that your letter was distributed and received to town staff and to the commission. It's just been a couple of months, so I think the chair was just asking to have it put in front of us, which we did receive it, uh, tonight in the meeting. So everyone does have that in front of them.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, so, so, you know, so please come back to us and, um, recognize that there's not just an issue on his property. Uh, his property and our property are pretty much one in the same, and I would ask for some re- remediation on that.
All right, Mr. Chin, again, anybody else that's, uh, from the public?
Well, we'll, we'll do again, if there's any member of the public that would like to speak, please raise your hand at this time.
All right, so we're done with the, uh, public.
Uh, there's a, there's a member of the public coming in, hold on, one moment.
Hello?
Yes, if you can identify yourself and give your address, please.
I'm so sorry, I didn't know if you could hear me. This is Lauren McGally, and I'm at one fifty-nine Colony Avenue. And I've been listening, I'm sorry.
Okay, you said Colony Avenue?
I'm at one fifty-nine Colony Avenue, yes.
Do you bought this property, or are you near the property?
Um, I'm not, I can actually see it from where I am.
All right.
However, um, I just want to make sure that I reiterate what the Johnsons have said. I've watched this project go on for a number of months now. And first of all, it's about three stories tall, it's certainly not a shed. I've seen all the trees gone down on their side property line. I've seen a little bit of ponding, and I, I find it hard to believe that it seems that no one on this committee it, it seems to even, uh, recognize the letter that was sent to you. And I don't know, even if it's been a couple of months, why it would not have been reread before this commission meeting tonight. These are concerned citizens that their whole lives have been disrupted. And now it's as if no one can even recognize what they're saying. And you're saying that you're not responsible for this particular thing, I understand that, but this is going on all over Trumbull now, with people doing whatever they want. It's my understanding that the proper permits weren't given. And construction started anyway, and after season's assist, started again. So if the Johnsons have flooding concerns, I would think that things would be stopped, and this would be looked into further. As I would expect for any citizens in Trumbull that that would happen. That's really all I have to say, but I'm shocked at what I've heard all night long tonight.
All right, you're all set, ma'am?
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you, same to you. Anyone else, Bill?
Well, if anybody else would like to make a comment, please press the raise hand button, or star nine if you're on the phone. Uh, Mr. Chairman, it does not look like, uh, there are any additional comments.
All right, thank you. All right, at this point, I will go to Attorney Cordone, and, uh.
Well, Chair, Chairman, can I respond to some of these accusations?
Yeah, go ahead.
And then I think we'll turn it, first of all, this went before the ZBA, back in September, and it's got, I know it's got nothing to do with my client's credibility. He went and spoke to all these neighbors, they all signed off on it. I'm looking at the letter that he gave them that talked about building a New England style, he's taking down his new shed and pool house, and building a New England style barn, and that he was seeking a height variance. Those height variances are all printed, there's signs that are put up, I mean, this thing, everybody knew about what was going there. Um, and it was signed by all of his adjoining neighbors. Also, let's take note, and I think it's important, if there's anybody that's causing a, a flooding problem, it's the Johnsons' property. Both the Johnson and Zemec property, unless, I don't know, physics has changed, water flows downstream. Our client is at the bottom of Plymouth Avenue. Both the Zemec property and the Johnson property are of higher elevations than our property. And the only trees that were removed within the regulated area were, were a couple that were designated, that were dead trees that were designated on the plan. The balance of the trees were outside of the regulated area on our client's property. Um, if any, but anything is caused, the Johnsons, if they have a problem with their backyard, it's either from the Zemec property or, or water coming down Plymouth Avenue. Water, and I mean, you guys have been doing this for years, Chairman, you've been there thirty years. And I don't know the last time you've asked anybody to solve a water problem from water that, that is, that is, that is, uh, seeping uphill. So thi- thi- this has become just a, this is like the Hatfields and McCoys, unfortunately. But if we stick to the wetlands, which I, which I'm asking to, but I just felt I had to defend what my client is saying, because he, he went to everyone. Mr. Johnson even signed the letter in favor of it. So, you know, uh, this, this is the, you got somebody who's very unhappy, but we have, we've, we've, we went through building, building is approved. All of our plans, the only thing that's left is this wetlands issue, which frankly, our clients started going back and forth in October as to what kind of plans he would need, and if, and if he wasn't going to remove the shed, did he have to remove anything? Did he, did he even have to come before wetlands? But we've straightened that out, you've talked to the town attorney, I think the commission is probably looking, may have the ability to impose an additional um, fee on top of us, which I think a number that we would probably be comfortable with. But I, I am, I am, uh, uh, you know, this is not, my client has not caused this issue for the Johnsons. The Johnsons' water issue is their own issue, it's an issue, they've lived there for forty years, and they've had a water issue for forty years. Not caused by the property that sits at a lower elevation than there. It's an issue, they've lived there for forty years and they've had a water issue for forty years, not caused by the property that sits at a lower elevation than theirs. I, I, I can't, this is, this is two fighting neighbors looking to get support, one neighbor looking to get support because, but my client, he's got his ZBA waiver. He's done all he can and is, and is very much improving the, 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 um, removing impervious materials and, and improve, and improving the drainage on the property. From where there was, there was nothing there. There was no, there was nothing but a concrete pool there. Now you have a wood structure above it. You have gutters that will go into a rain garden. You have um, white pines that will be doubled, the amount will be doubled to, to basically buffer the wetland area. And the balance is, is, is an issue between two neighbors. And if, and you know, the, the, the Johnsons have all, all rights, all the rights they can, if they want to do something about it in a civil court, that's, that's their prerogative. But frankly, they don't have a leg to stand on. My client has done nothing on their property, has touched nothing on their property, has not taken down a tree on their property and has not taken, and the trees that they're talking about are not in the regulated area. So, you know, that, that's where we are. My, my, maybe if my client left a bunch of dead hemlocks between the two properties that were there, we wouldn't have an issue with the Johnsons, but that's not the case. But it's also not something that's before this commission. But I just want, I, you, you have to balance these stories out and, and that's where we are.
All right. Well, again, the reason I was going to our attorney is that what they were presenting is out of our purview. It's not something we can remedy or that we can handle. Uh, again, wetlands, that's what we're here for. So if there had been problems, unfortunately, it should have been brought up during the, uh, process, but with ZBA and all that. Would you like to add anything, Attorney Cordon? Hold on one second.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I, I think, you know, it's, you adequately described or correctly described what this commission's charges is to protect the wetlands. So, um, that's what's before this commission tonight. Uh, I, I do recognize that the, the Johnsons and other neighbors' concerns may be legitimate. And so, uh, you know, I, I do understand that there was a sequence of events where permits were not necessarily taken out in the proper order where work was commenced. And, and that is a violation. I believe Attorney Rizio will the applicant agree as a condition of approval to pay, um, a, a fine to the commission for that out of sequence events. I think we had mentioned a twenty five hundred dollar penalty, which I know is not significant, but it is important to make sure that people are complying with the permit process. Attorney Rizio, your client agree to that?
Yes.
Attorney Rizio, the, the, the planting of trees along the border uh, is not necessarily a wetlands approval matter. But as a gesture of goodwill, will your client agree to plant some trees along the border with the Johnsons' property?
You know, I don't understa-, you know, without a plan, without a number, look, our client is not any interest, any more interested in looking into the Johnsons' backyard as the Johnsons looking to our backyard. But I, you know, I, I wouldn't be able to commit to a planting plan that's outside this purview. I would think that we're certainly going to look into planting some white pines or hemlocks in the future. But, but I mean, I don't think we should be held hostage by the Johnsons. Um, and, and, and I think that's what, that's what they're doing. And I think they're just using that. But frankly, their, their drainage issues are not our issues. They're not, are not caused by us. And, you know, I, 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 I don't, I don't, I don't understand how I could, uh, agree to, uh, uh, you know, what, what we will, we will make some plant things, but I don't know, necessarily know that it can be a condition of approval. Our client in good faith will, will, will plant, will certainly buffer, buffer themselves from the Johnsons. But to, to lay out a plan and who knows if it'll ever be, it'll, it'll, the, the trees will ever be big enough, big enough or the type that they like or what else? I, 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 I think we can only control what's within the regulated area.
I, Attorney Rizio, I, I, that is what's before the Wetlands Commission. I'm just bringing it up because i- if there was, uh, more dialogue in the ZBA hearing, that's often something the ZBA would require. If there's a concern, they would require an additional buffer along the property line to help alleviate some of the concerns of neighbors. And as was mentioned tonight, things were maybe discussed that were understood as to what was being built. But again, that's not before this commission. I just asked if that your client would agree to that.
Our, our client will certainly look to create, believe me, as you can see, there is not a lot of goodwill between the neighbors and sometimes trees and fences make better neighbors in an upland area. And our client has, as I said, no interest in, uh, you know, and remember, the trees were on my, our client's property. It's not like he went and cut down the trees in an upland area that were on the Johnsons' property.
Understood, counsel, but there's a structure there where there wasn't a structure before and is a, a structure that received a variance for a, to be a larger structure. So I, that's why I'm, I'm raising the issue, um, as the, as the individuals from the public raise that concern. And Mr. Chairman, I, I think it's now up to the commission to deliberate on or, uh, or close the public hearing and then you can deliberate on the application. You, you, the commission has visited the property and reviewed the plan. So what's before the commission is the wetlands issues tonight.
Okay. And it is my understanding that the, uh, fine is a, would be a condition for them to get their CO. Without the fine being paid, they will not get a CO, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I also may, with respect to concerns about the use of the barn, commercial use is not permitted in a residential zone. That is a zoning matter. So that could be a zoning violation if that's the case, but that's not, again, what is in the purview of this.
Again, it's.
And I want to make it clear, Chairman, if I can make it clear for the record, it is not a commercial structure. Our client's using his own, own stuff. He's gotten, it's not a, not a commercial structure at all. It's never intended to be.
So I was trying to make clear, unfortunately, what was being presented. It was not in our purview. So like I said, we're here for wetlands and I've been here for a long time. So, all right. Um, need a motion to, uh, close the public hearing?
I had a question.
Wait a moment, beforehand, John, Loria, you have a comment?
Yes, I, I, Attorney Rizio made some comments about contours and elevations in our packet. Do we have this information? Do I have, we have a contour map?
No.
And isn't that part of our regulations that, that a contour map should be submitted with this, this application? So I, I don't know. It's been a while since I've been back there, but now I have to go back and look at the contours, which property was higher, which property was lower, because the water off shedding off of this property is a wetlands concern. In my opinion, and.
I remember.
Having this.
No, it's, it's an upland area. It's got nothing to do with wetlands from the Johnsons.
You've made a disturbance that has changed the, the flow of water from one property to another, then.
That, that's, that's a, that.
And that is in the upland review area, which you didn't have a permit to do these things for. So I would like to see a contour map before I can make a decision.
This is.
Okay, firstly.
You made, you brought, you, Attorney Rizio, you brought this whole issue up that, that this house is higher in elevation than that house. Can you please put this up on the screen so we can look at it?
Yeah. John, you made the assumption that the, uh, water problem was created. Uh, which party? We don't know. As far as a topography, they were coming off of a raised pool. They weren't excavating. They were building above that. So.
There's the contours on the map.
What I'm saying, you know, it wasn't something that, uh, you know.
You know, we, we.
It was outside of our area, you know, so.
If you look at the map, it shows the, the size. We did not go off to the Johnsons' property and locate that. I can tell you from my own walking of the property. And if you walk the property, the Johnsons' property is higher than the, than the, uh,
The Johnsons' property.
And Plymouth, it is the absolute bottom of Plymouth Avenue with, and you've been in, John, you've been in Trumbull.
I've been there.
Plymouth Avenue is a hill. The topo is on the map. You can see it. It's there. We, we don't have any obligation to do the topo on an adjoining property. That comes from my, my physical inspection that the property is.
Attorney Rizio, you brought, you brought up the topography though. So I.
Well, I, but I, but we did, we do have the topography on our map. It's right on, on the map that you're looking at.
Okay. I'd say it here. First map I looked at my pocket. I didn't see it. I'm sorry.
I, I, believe me, I don't, Chair, Mr. Laura, you and I have been going ahead of three years. I have no interest in arguing with you or fi-, I'm not trying to fire the end, but I get excited about this. Just because we're good.
I'm from Missouri. You guys show me. Okay?
Well, there it is.
Okay. Thank you.
With the chair, can I ask a few questions?
Sure. Go ahead, David.
Um, the row of trees along the property line where the Johnsons were indicating the thirty eight point one feet. What is the status of those trees?
That's outside of our area though.
Not, it's from where the three hemlocks were removed to the back, there's still a row of trees. And that would be within our purview. Is that on the Johnsons' property? Is it on the applicant's property? Is it, is it joint ownership or, you know, that's one of my concerns.
Those trees are on the Johnsons' property.
Are those trees still remaining?
And we have not removed them. No, correct.
The three hemlock trees should be replaced in same location.
Commissioner Verespi, if you want us to replace, if you want us to replace three hemlocks with, that are within the regulated area, we'll agree to replace the three hemlocks.
That would be much appreciated. Uh, I do have the Johnsons' letter in front of me. I am reading it. I have read it. Um, it was good to refresh it. They were asking for an independent review of the drainage, which I know is something that is part of something that you can be asked for in the public hearing, something for the commission to consider. Um, and, you know, with the structure of this size, I know we can't consider use of this structure. That's a planning and zoning issue, but we can certainly regulate and put a condition that there's to be no uh, materials or equipment stored outside around the barn. So no piles of lumber, no piles of dirt, no stumps, no landscape materials, you know, it's, this isn't to be stockpiles to be created within the hundred foot setback around the barn.
I'm sure, yeah, no, no problem with that as a condition of approval. And frankly, I think our clients learned this lesson. If you were to do, do any such activity, have to come back before you anyway if it's in the regulated area. No problem.
Attorney Rizio, do you know if the, um, hemlocks that are shown there to be removed, were they removed?
I believe, I believe they were. I'm not sure. Uh, wha- whatever I can tell you is the three hemlocks will be, if they haven't been removed, they, if they have been removed, they'll be replaced. And if they're, and if they haven't been removed, they will stay.
All right. All right. Any other comments, questions before?
One more.
Go ahead, David.
The, uh, rain garden, um, should be recorded on the land records, the location and its use so that it doesn't mysteriously disappear and become lawn someday or a putting green.
No problem.
So, you can't put a flag in the middle of it and chip towards it.
I get it. I get it.
Well, everybody wants that HBO comedy special, you know, what can I say? All right. Any other comments, questions before we close the public hearing?
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Tatiana.
I believe there are a couple of members of the public that still have their hands up. So I'm not sure how the commission wishes to handle that.
Have we closed, um?
We haven't.
Attorney Cordon.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think we, we asked a couple of times if there are additional comments from the public and there was no reply. So what, what we can't have is a, an ongoing dialogue the, this evening. The way this works is the applicant, just explains to the public, the applicant presents. Then there is a time for the public to comment and ask questions, which has taken place. We asked twice if there's additional comments.
Right.
And then someone did have an initial comment. We made those comments. We asked again, so that, that portion of the meeting is now concluded. And so there's interaction with the applicant, with the commission, and then the commission will close the public hearing and then the commission, it's, will deliver, deliberate without the applicant, just the commission.
All right. Once again, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Okay. Made by Bob Frigno and seconded by Rich. Okay. All in favor, uh, Carmine?
I understand what the.
Yeah.
What, what the attorneys, our attorney said, but.
Carmine, we're going for a motion to close the public hearing right now.
I agree with you, Carmine. I think.
I'd say, I'd say, I, my answer then is no.
All right, Mr., we could have a discussion on it. Are you, what's your concern, Commissioner, if I would?
I, in my opinion, when we vote to close the hearing is when the, the public can no longer talk. If there's additional people that want to talk, I feel that they should be heard.
It's up to the chair.
Okay. Except I think our attorney pretty well directed it. It can't be a back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. We did, I did ask multiple times.
Is this new public comment or is it the same people?
Yeah, that's what I'd like to know. Is it new people?
No, it isn't. So.
Oh, it's the same people again?
Yeah.
Okay, then, then I, I, then I have to continue. But if it's someone, no, I think we should hear them.
And I agree, John, but it isn't. So.
Okay, okay.
All right. So we're closing. There, there's a motion to close the public.
Mr. Chairman, hold on one moment. There is a new member of the public who has not spoken yet.
All right.
All right. So I'll, I'll withdraw the motion then.
All right. Thank you.
Hey, I'll bring in, um, Dee. And they're joining us as panelists now.
Hopefully they're quick.
All right. I see a Dee on the screen and I see that your, uh, microphone is muted.
There we go. Hello?
Yes, we were having problems with this Zoom thing. My name is Bob Tvarzik. I live across from the Johnsons at one fifty two Plymouth Avenue, Trumbull, Connecticut. We've lived here for fifty two years. I'd like to clarify some of the misgivings that missed the attorney for Mr. Reardon has provided. Ever since the Johnsons' house was built, that area has been wetlands. The Johnsons' foundation was full of water before the house was completed. A hundred and twenty feet behind the Johnsons' house is a pond that's always been wetlands. Behind the, the shed for the pool that Mr. Reardon wants to take down, twenty five years ago was a stream that led water from that area to the pond that Mr. Reardon owns at the end of the street. I feel for the Johnsons because we seem to all have been misled when Mr. Reardon brought the application and had the neighbor sign it. When he said he was building a barn, I had no idea it was going to look like what it does today. I feel for the Johnsons because I think that thing being in their backyard tremendously devaluates their property. I told Mr. Reardon, you could build whatever you want. I don't really care. But it has caused the whole neighborhood to be in uproar. And I agree, I understand that it is not a wetlands commission uh, issue. It should have been right before zoning, before the thing was approved. But we didn't know when the meeting was. Uh, we've been told that letters were sent for the zoning board of appeals meeting. I never got one and several neighbors never got one. So I'm calling in support of the Johnsons. I know how they feel and this has really disrupted our wonderful neighborhood. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Chairman, obviously I can respond.
Okay, Mr. Chin, nobody else from the public, right?
Uh, there, there are no other new comments from the public at this.
All right. Go ahead, Attorney Rizio.
Chairman, not one of the comments made by the last phone person who made the phone call are, are relevant to our application. Our client sent out the letters by ZBA. You have to send them out by certified mail. They were all returned and approved. They had a public hearing, the notice, the hearing was noticed in a newspaper. Um, we've agreed to put some trees in and replace some trees where even though they're outs, you know, within the, with, you know, that we don't believe belonged to, that we're, we're putting. We're, we're putting in additional trees. We'll put some more additional trees in as Commissioner Verespi required. Um, I, I, look, this is turning into who, who can bring the most people for or against. And it's turned into a personal battle between a bunch of neighbors. However, we've spent the last thirty days working with the engineering department, working with Tatiana to come up with a rain garden, to come up with uh the proper drainage. And let's all put this in perspective once again. First of all, the Johnsons' property, I believe, I'm not gonna say, I'm not an engineer, but from walking the property and from living, having lived in Trumbull forever, not anymore, but knowing that property from like the back of my hand, that uh, that their property sits above our property, a little higher elevation. I don't know how much higher, but enough. More importantly, let's keep in mind, this is a structure that is built over a cement pool. That's it. I mean, there, 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 and now you're taking this structure, cement pool with patio around it. And now you're creating more impervious, more pervious, impervious material or impervious area. And now you're taking all the water that would have gone in the pool and on the pool patio is going into gutters and being released into a rain garden. You can't have a less impactful project on this, which takes an unstructured drainage issue and now add structure to it, which has been approved by your town engineer. The, the, whether you feel badly for the Johnsons or my client feels his, the credibility is being besmirched, is irrelevant to this. We've done what we had to do. We've done everything we've been asked to do by the town, by the town, town engineering department. And we respectfully request you grant this application. I'm sorry, we get neighbors that you guys end up being the uh, you know, have to hear about stuff that's irrelevant with regard to your, your, this presentation. Um, and I apologize if whatever, whatever ill will our client might have caused. But that ill will is, 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 is directed at privacy. It's directed at stuff that's irrelevant to this application. Um, they all looked at, they all were notified this barn was gonna need a height variance. They all signed on to it. They all, there was a public hearing that not only would be on Zoom, so that anybody wanted to hear it, and they were all notified by mail. This is not a surprise to anybody, except maybe they didn't read the plans, didn't look at the plans. But there's been, there's been full disclosure by our client. And I'm sorry if the Johnsons are unhappy. If they have a drainage issue, I think, I suggest they maybe talk to the town engineer about what they can do for their property. But we've done everything we can possibly do on our property. And none of it affects the Johnsons. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, again. I'm going to bring forth a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, motion, Bob, seconded by?
John.
John Laurie, okay. Carmine, are you, you're a yes or no?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Bob?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Rich?
Yes.
Okay, it is so done. All right, uh, let's do the uh minutes real quick for uh March fourth, two thousand twenty five.
Is that the whole motion? That we just made a vote or should we make a formal?
We're making, yeah, am I gonna make a motion?
We wanna put in the three hemlock trees or a few things like that, but I think we generally agreed we're gonna.
That motion was to close the public hearing.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, we're gonna debate on it.
Okay.
The minutes from the last meeting?
Yeah, then, then we can go back to uh, to uh you know, doing our vote on this. Give us a moment to catch ourselves, sir.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the Town of Trumbull Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission meeting held on March fourth, two thousand twenty five.
Okay.
Seconded by?
Deacon.
Deacon, okay, all in favor? Okay, that was unanimous. Okay, now that we've had a breather, let's talk about application twenty five dash zero two. Greg, I need a motion to approve.
Yep. I make a motion to approve twenty five oh two. Um, Philip Reardon Jr., permit approval to fill in pool and use existing pool footprint and pool walls for barn foundation. Remove shed, pool cabana, concrete pool patio and slate patio around the pool. Install new driveway, plant privacy trees behind the barn. Potential mudroom installed where slate patio is off dwelling behind garage within a regulated area at one fifty nine Plymouth Avenue. For, uh, in accordance to the following conditions, from the Town of Trumbull Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission, section one, general conditions one point one to one point one oh. And section three, additional conditions. Three point one. Approval of a CO is contingent upon payment of a twenty five hundred dollar fine for not following proper Trumbull permit process. Three point two, modify the planting plan to include four additional white pines to the proposed line of four white pines. Three point three, the three hemlocks on the plan that are marked to be removed. If the hemlocks are still there, they should be removed and replaced with new. If the three hemlocks were already removed, then they need to be replaced. Condition three point.
I think, I think it kind of crossed over. If they haven't been removed, they're to be left. If they haven't. To be replaced.
I thought I heard uh Attorney Rizio was gonna put new ones in.
Yeah.
Well, again, if they're there, uh, the understanding I had, they would remain. If they have been removed, we'll we'll replace, so.
All right, so you're saying if they're there, leave, okay.
Right. And if they've been removed, they'll be replaced.
They will be replaced, okay.
Okay.
Um, condition three point four. Um, there are to be no piles of supplies, materials, dirt, et cetera, in and around the barn structure in the upland review area. Three point five, rain garden needs to be recorded on the town land records so that it remains as a functioning rain garden.
Okay, Tatiana, have we missed anything?
I would add, um, recommend adding all conditions about maintaining erosion controls. They are standard, I believe, two point one. I don't have a list in front of me.
Yeah, um, that would be, um, two point one is erosion controls, correct.
Anything else, Tatiana?
Um, no, I think we've discussed with Attorney Rizio compliance with stormwater and perhaps some modifications, but they should be in section one, so we're, we should be all set.
Okay, anything else that the commission can think of that we might have missed? We're good?
The chair?
Good, Carmine.
Is there something in writing that the proposed new driveway, if it is installed, is going to be gravel?
Uh, it is depicted as gravel on the plan, um. And as long as it's within the wetlands regulated area, it shall remain gravel. Uh, which is just in front of the barn, um. Otherwise, we treat gravel as impervious area, so that they, they could pave it.
All right, anything else from the uh commission? We're good? Okay, we're gonna bring it to a vote? Carmine, are you yes or no?
Why am I first?
Excuse me, through the chair?
Yes, Colleen.
Who seconded that motion?
Let me think here, we went through, um, then seconded by Rich, no, I thought, but originally, no, I'm trying to think.
It has not been seconded.
Okay, seconded by John Loria, thank you. He just went up there, sorry. There's back and forth, back and forth, getting a little confusing.
Thank you, Colleen, for keeping us honest there.
No problem, thank you.
She's got my back, thank you. All right, I'm a yes, I'll go back to you. Bob?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
David?
I think this applicant needs to go away fixing the neighborhood, but I'm a yes.
John?
Yes.
Rich?
No.
Carmine? Uh, yeah, I agree with Dave. He, he needs to mend fences, but uh, based on what we're charged with, my answer is yes.
Okay, so it passes six yay and one nay.
Now, do you wanna explain yourself, Rich, since you've called me out before?
No, John, I wanna, I wanna clarify, John. I did not, I would never challenge your vote. Um, I was asking if there was something the commission could do to help you come on board.
Okay.
All right, um, field inspections. Okay, um, Easter is on the twentieth of this month. Um, Tatiana, twenty first, twenty second, good for you and John Mayer?
Yes, that's fine with me.
Tatiana, are you good for the twenty first and twenty second?
Um, yeah, I should be good, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we'll do the uh twenty first then. And uh, what we've been doing is going a little bit earlier, because there's quite a bit to look at here. You want one or you want two, or one thirty or two? I'm asking you, Tatiana.
Um, whatever the commission prefers.
Okay, one thirty.
Mister Chairman, this is just the ferry property?
No, this is gonna be the G O B property and the three ferry properties.
All right.
So, and I know you generally walk the weekends, I know John does, and uh, you know, so.
Carmine, you could just be in touch.
All right.
Rich, I probably won't be walking because I'll be, I won't be at the next.
No, you're away on vacation, so.
If you need me to walk when I get back, let me know and then I'll visit those properties.
All right, so uh, as far as the walk is concerned, it will be April uh twenty first, which is a Monday at one thirty. Um, Colleen, is there anything else that uh needs to come before the commission?
Oh, through the chair.
Damn, one second.
I do not have anything, Richard.
Okay, real quick, Rich, because it's late, anything from uh P and Z? I know that I'm getting a lot of calls on uh you know what, over Nichols, so.
Uh, yeah, the uh current application at the corner of Booth Hill Road and Unity Road uh is for forty seven new structures, would be a total of fifty on site. Uh, there is a significant amount of inland wetlands there. Uh, what they're applying for is something called a village residence district. Right now, the village residence district applies to various properties with a certain amount of frontage and, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's two hundred feet of unbroken frontage on a state highway. Uh, what they are uh applying to do is make that an and or, so it can have two hundred feet of frontage on a state highway and or be within twenty five hundred feet of exit fifty of the parkway. That would encompass the uh, the relevant uh property. Uh, there's been significant community um participation on both sides. People have come out, um, speaking for and against the uh uh, the property numerically largely against. Um, you can see, I'm, I'm being very uh it's very difficult to talk about a pending project without.
Uh, it's different, I know, you're being diplomatic, but there is, there is quite a bit of wetlands, it's uh so it will come before us?
Uh, if, 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 well, there's three steps, I'll make this thirty seconds or less, I promise. Uh, first step is to change the definition of the village residence district to encompass twenty five hundred feet. Then the second step would be to apply that overlay zone would, would be able to be applied to that um, that property. And then the wetlands application would come and the zoning application comes after that. If they get through the first hurdle of applying the village residence district to twenty five hundred feet of exit fifty, if you think of that radius. And I think it also has to be north and east of it, so it couldn't be below the parkway or west of twenty five, then they would be eligible to start the process. It would come to wetlands. If it passes through wetlands, it would go back to P and Z. Uh, but yes, if, if they get it approved, it's absolutely a tremendous amount of wetlands there, so it would require our approval. Virtually the entire areas that are in the regulated area.
My question is, who's on first? I think I followed you, but I'm not sure. All right, anything else?
Stop by P and Z.
Uh, through the chair.
Go ahead, Tatiana.
I'm so sorry, uh, it's just getting late and I missed something on my notes for this one fifty nine Plymouth. Is there any way to amend and add, um, a couple of quick conditions? I apologize.
Attorney Cordon, can we?
Nine Plymouth, Tatiana, what are the conditions you need to add?
Um, so one, one is the stream behind the sheds, um, that actually conveys the water from, um, between the subject and Johnson's property to the pond, it's uh, it, it's clogged essentially, so perhaps that's causing some of these problems. And I wanted to mention that the applicant should maintain the uh water flow free and open, um, from any obstruction, just remove leaf debris. Um, and second note I had is that the applicant should adhere to the Connecticut D E P dam safety unit, um, requirements.
Say that again, Tatiana, the D E P?
D E P dam safety, um, unit or program. The requirements.
A good catch on that, Tatiana. We talked about the uh, making sure that was kept clean. I forgot about it myself, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's just too late for me.
Is that dam and like dam and demolition?
Uh, dam is a, D A M, as a.
A dam?
Yep.
So, Mister Chairman, we could uh take a um, a motion to reconsider application.
Twenty five dash zero two.
Yes, to amend the conditions with what Tatiana had stated.
All right.
To amend twenty five oh two to include two additional conditions. Um, the um that Tatiana brought up, the uh covert stream behind the shed that moves water to the pond, needs to be maintained from leaf debris. And the applicant needs to follow Connecticut deep dam safety, was limit program requirements, I was gonna look it up to get the words, but.
Or just deep uh dam safety.
Dam safety, okay.
Requires maintenance as well. Clearance of the tree plus.
Okay, I need, I need a second on this.
I'll second it.
I've just seconded, okay. All in favor? I see, we're all, we're all unanimous on it.
I, I, I'm a no again, Rich.
You're a no again?
I don't, I don't think it would be justified for me to vote yes on a application, I just voted no.
Okay. You're a man of consistency, okay.
Tatiana, thank you for bringing us that to our attention. And if someone from your office would just contact Attorney Rizio's office and let him know that those additional conditions were added.
Can I make a comment too? Normally you don't like clean leaf debris out of streams like that because it hurts the invertebrates that are living in the stream. But I guess in this case, we wanna keep the water flowing. I just want that I bring that up for commissioners to consider in the future, not to just make a, a statement to clean the leaves out of the stream because you may be doing more harm, but that's it.
All right, uh, Attorney Cordon, did you wanna say anything about our special meeting for the eighth?
Yeah, I just said, uh, we have a special meeting currently scheduled for, I believe, for one thirty on Tuesday, the eighth, to consider a settlement um, for, I believe, lot four West Mission Road. Believe I got the address right.
What time is that meeting on, again?
I believe it's one.
Thirty.
One thirty PM by Zoom. If you cannot make the meeting, please let us know in pants.
Okay, um.
Thank you.
John Loria uh will be away and uh
I'll be here, I'll be here for the meeting, the Zoom meeting.
You will, okay. You will, okay.
My period for justice in law class, I'll have some hands on uh. And all seriousness, Rich, my, that is a free period half the time, so we don't get at our school, so I may have to cover, but there's a fifty-fifty chance I can attend.
Yeah, Commissioner Dee and I.
You weren't part of the uh process.
You should consider the settlement because you were not, you did not vote on the application.
Oh, right, problem solved.
Alright. Alright, anything else before we close this, and I see Carmine heading in, I'm just gonna close, I'm just gonna close that part of it, go.
Uh, regarding one fifty-nine Plymouth, uh, this went to ZBA, I know there's supposed to be a sign off if something goes to building or it goes to uh build, yeah, something goes to building, they need a sign off on, on us before they'll sign off. Isn't there an interaction with ZBA along that same line that we should have been notified? They should have had uh gotten our approval first before zone, uh, before ZBA signed off on this?
Yeah, Commissioner DeFeo, just um, and I'd be happy, if you wanna call me after the meeting tomorrow, be happy to discuss more. There is a process for signing off a building permit in which all the departments have to sign off on it, including wetlands and zoning. There was a stop, or a stop work order was issued, so the process did to some degree work because it, it, there was activity that was stopped there that was not properly followed, okay?
Okay.
Alright. If there be no objection, I move to adjourn, I wish everybody a uh nice Easter. We will see those people on the walk on the twenty-first and then May sixth is our next meeting and we will see the, on the Zoom for next Tuesday at one thirty. That's it.
Good night everyone.
Good night.
Good night everyone.
Bye.
Alright. Thank you, Colleen.